Calling the meeting to order, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Alright, the next step is approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes or suggestions from the council? How about from the public? Are there any suggested changes to the tonight's agenda? I see no suggested changes to the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up, we have a couple of minutes from May 9th and May 23rd. So let's start with May 9th. Are there any questions or comments about May 9th? Minutes. Alright, I have one really quick one on a change on page two. The Ranch Arena Government to Government Meeting, I think we said that was going to be Mayor Pro Tim Ladwick and Counselor West, but Counselor Breckenridge was the alternate. If it was on a Friday, she could attend, right? Is that correct?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that's so confusing. And so with that change, anything else? Alright. Any public changes to the minutes of May 9th? Alright, I see none. So is there any?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the May 23rd minutes. Questions or comments on those? And public comments or questions on the May 23rd minutes? Okay, I see none. Back to the council.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, thank you. Next is our council reports and committee assignments. I'll start to my left with Jack West, if you have something to add.
Yes, I do. Interesting HCA meeting. We had a lot of interesting information that I thought I'd like to share a little bit. Clean California is a this program that a state program put up by Governor Newsom, put about $1.1 billion into a variety of of activities to clean up California, get rid of, try to get rid of the garbage, try to just make it look nicer. And the first, one of the first project, maybe the first project was Vance Avenue in Vanilla for the state of California. So it was, they just cleaned it up, made it into a park to try to get rid of some of the things that are grants out there. So hopefully we'll, we may have an opportunity at least to try to get a be able to do something to some of our areas. It's still, still a while before the grants will be given out. They're also running a dump day program that I haven't heard about in locally where you can do some free ways of getting rid of some of the garbage and some of the things that you're, that you want to get, take care of. So eliminate litters and create jobs is a lot of this program. Another thing that's going on is through the REAP program, there's multimedia grant awards to increase community discourse and hounding on housing needs. And the first one we got to see was called Humboldt is Home. It's a video that actually works where they actually go talk to the homeless and ask them for what kinds of solutions they see for their, for their issues that they have in Humboldt County. And there will be a number of different multimedia programs out there. They'll have them on a video. So if you put Humboldt is Home into to try to find it on your computer, you can probably put that in there and find it. It does, it's nice looking what's going on. Another thing that's supervised by the drone is proposal CalPAN will work with them on trying to repair a lot of C drive. So that may be, that hopefully would be in the future. We'll see that really get a little bit updated. The last thing is that HTA is developing full hydrogen powered shuttle program and they'll have hydrogen powered ability to get hydrogen powered cars in Humboldt County. You know that. So they're doing a lot of work to get through that. It's a great culture. They're part of such great, very good. That's it.
Thank you.
Well, normally I report on HTA, so we're together on that. Sorry. No, I did attend HTA and Jack is right. We are a leader of the state. I think I've mentioned this, mentioned this in the past. Right now we're shipping hydrogen fuel in from Sacramento because it's the only place that can produce enough. But the plan is to have enough hydrogen fuel in the county for all public transportation, FedEx, UPS, delivery, that kind of thing. So pretty exciting. And then redect did not. There was nothing to report from our redact meetings. That's the final report.
Alright, do you have anything, David? Doc?
Yes, so I'm part of the Red Bull Coast Energy Authority Group and the director has reached out to the city of Trinidad, myself and a councilman member of West to meet with him at the end of the month. So we're going to try to schedule a meeting maybe the last, last couple of days of the month to go over Trinidad's need for energy, energy resilience or any other energy concerns that maybe the city or the community would like to bring up to help us be more resilient or any other things that might want to.
Alright, I guess it's my turn. I had a couple of quick things. I attended the Lead California Cities meeting in Fort Bragg on May 12th. And they covered again the Great Redwood Trail, which is being covered as you guys know in a lot of different meetings. They also had a presentation by their Chief of Police on their Care Response Unit, which is essentially two social services liaisons. And it kind of reminded me of the ambassador program that that we've been looking at doing. And, and he did offer that these folks are the liaison to a bunch of social services for unhoused population. And they deal with family issues, mental illness and substance abuse. And it's not necessarily a program we can recreate here because it's part of their police department. But it's something that they are willing to work with us and provide information. So we can reach out to them and get more information. And they may have some training materials and things like that that we can use. So and then Community Emergency Response Team, CERT training, I attended that May 19th and 21st, and that's on tonight's agenda. I did want to recognize the trainers in the room who did a fabulous job. It was 23 hours of disaster and emergency preparedness. And so I'm thrilled that they're here tonight to talk with us a little bit later in the agenda. And then because we're going to be launching our new website between this city council meeting and the next, I am going to use a little bit of my committee report out time, Dave and I, to kind of cover, just show you guys a sneak peek. It's like a three minute, you know, sneak peek of the website. So if you bear with me here, I'll see if I can share my screen. Open the window. So I stand by here. Permission to share? Otherwise. Okay. You guys seeing it on your display? Because I know you're not seeing it there.
Hit your shared screen.
Thank you. Zoom. Okay, I hit share screen.
It gives you to choose.
And then photos.
Yeah, there we go.
Alright, so it seems to make that go away, but it's gone on my screen. So let me just very quickly. So this is the new look and feel of the city's website. It was done by Civic Plus. And I'll just remind everybody that Gabe, our City Clerk, and Eli, our City Manager, and I were the web force task, were the web task force. You're here, Web Force. But yeah, so it's a, it's a team effort. It's not just something I'm doing. I'm just the report out person at the moment. So here's the dropdown for city government, for example. I'm not going to go through everything, but I'm just going to show you briefly. Here's an example of what the city council, what part of the website would look like. You could then click down here and say, oh, I want to see the municipal code. You could look at the most recent budgets. You could see what committees the council is assigned to. You can go to the city council meeting here and see the latest agendas and minutes and so forth. So, and we will have links to the YouTube videos. So the tapings of the, of the meetings as well. And then under, I'm going to go back to the main site. This is the stage website. So the response time is going to be slower than what it's going to be in real life.
But yeah.
But this is the community part of the website. We'll have things like community surveys, links out to the tribal civic club, you know, the land trust, et cetera. You can find departments and services information, things like, oh, you know, I want to find out about a cemetery plot. You can go there.
I understand.
If you're doing business, if you are doing business in the city of Trinidad, this is, you know, work in progress. So it's not completely filled out. But you get your business license. You can find out about bids that are available, request with proposals and all the short term rental documents. And then, and I have to keep going back to that home because it's, again, it's a stage website. And you won't, when you look, of course, you won't see, when you log into the stage website, you won't see things like you edit revisions, all that stuff at the bottom. That's, that's because I'm in edit mode. You can look up agendas and minutes in the bottom left hand corner. It'll be really easy to just go and say, okay, what were the recent meetings? What are all the documents? What are the videos? How do I view more information about those? So that's kind of all the agenda and minutes at the bottom there. Then you have every other kind of document that we have. So you can go to the documents area and just search for a document, resolutions, ordinances, public comment documents, you know, what have you. You can do your search or you can choose by, by a department or you can do it by a file category. And then there are two sections that we're still working on down here on how do I? So we'll have kind of an easy FAQ for kind of like, how do I get a dog license? And it'll be really easy to click through and find that. And then a big push will be for subscribe. So we want to get as many people in town and even outside of town to subscribe and we'll be able to send emails. We'll be able to do push SMS or text messages and emergencies and things like that. So the idea was that everybody came together, we didn't council, approved this, worked. Probably back in February, when we signed the contract and we are hoping to launch this in early July, maybe July 1st. So I just want to thank everybody for the support. I think it's going to be in a lot to the community to be able to access information more easily. And with that, since it's not an agenda item, I won't take Q and A. I will just, I'm working with my fellow counselors, correct?
That's.
Okay, excellent. So I'm going to stop sharing and give control back. And thank you for that.
Thank you.
Alright, so with that, I'd like to, a good segue to the staff reports.
We have Lieutenant McCall online. So turn it over to him first.
Alright, good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. Alright, so for the month of May, again, looking at stats that are for the greater Trinidad area, not specifically just within the city limits itself. Calls for service overall, we're down just a few from 193 in April to 189 in May. When comparing those to the stats that we started pulling here over the last couple of months where we've, where one of our analysts has refined the calls for service, limiting them down to within the, the city limits. Only about 40 of those, at least under the types of, of calls that she included, which should pretty much cover everything. Only about 40 of those calls were actually within the city limits itself. Excuse me. Overall, and again, this is back to the overall Trinidad, Greater Trinidad area. We had 22 reports taken, which was up about, it looks like eight from the previous month. Arrests were also up from three to six for the month of May. Felony investigations, same thing. They went from two in April to nine in May. And misdemeanor investigations went from two in April to six in May. One assault for the month, which was on par with last month's. We had eight of the various types of burglaries reported being buildings or vehicles. One vandalism. A couple of thefts, which was similar to last month's. Disturbances were about the same as well from four to, in April to six in May. Four trespass prowler type calls, one stolen vehicle or stolen vehicle recovery. Alarms were down a few from 10 to six. Patrol checks being foot patrols or business checks, those types of things were also down from almost 40 in April to a little under 20 in May. And then suspicious persons or vehicles, we had three of those for the month of May. Eight unwanted subjects or unwanted camping type, trespass camping type calls. And then one traffic stopper vehicle investigation with 131 total miscellaneous calls. As far as the stuff more specific to Trinidad itself and sticking to those city limits out of those little under 40 calls for service, 10 of those were just Trinidad patrols. So in other words, a deputy patrolling the area and logging that they are just conducting a patrol in the Trinidad area. Four of those were patrol checks, three public assists, a couple of abandoned vehicle calls, a couple of general disturbance calls, a couple of trespasses, a couple of unwanted subjects, a couple of welfare checks calls, and then one each of a myriad of other typically minor type stuff being 911 missed files or agency assist calls or other alarms, an animal problem, camping violation, that type of thing. So that's the picture for the stats. One other thing that I did want to cover is that, and forgive me if I've already mentioned this to you guys, I don't think I did, but sometimes with the various I don't think I did, but sometimes with the various MCSD and Willow Creek Community Service Districts and Blue Lakes, keeping my meetings straight and who I've told what to can sometimes I can mess that up. But as some of you may be aware, next month, Lieutenant Miller, that formerly held the North Area Lieutenant position, is retiring. And he has accepted a position as the Chief of Police for the Blue Lake Tribal Police Department, the rancheria there. But in that, there's going to be some shifting around of lieutenants. And with that, my responsibilities for the time being at least are are being expanded. And I'm going to be going from just being the North Area Patrol Lieutenant and and having the stuff for the northern part of the county and northeastern part of the county to just be in the overall patrol lieutenant for the entire county. So the job that was being done by another lieutenant to cover all the stuff that goes on between Eureka down to Garberville and the south end of the county is is going to be under under my purview as well. Meaning that probably more often than not, my office location is going to be changing and I won't be in McKinleyville on a daily basis or almost daily basis like I I am now. So I'm going to do my best to still make as many of these these meetings and stuff as I can. But with that added, added schedule items that I'm going to have, maybe a little, a little more often that I'm I'm end up missing meetings here and there. But obviously, I'll I'll be available and responsive as I can to continue to to communicate and coordinate with city officials and stuff and do what we can to to serve the community as best we are able to.
Okay, so thank you. I don't know if counsel has any questions or comments.
I'd like to ask more. Perhaps some information about people breaking into homes and spending the night in a variety of areas in Trinidad and outside of Trinidad area. Has that been taken care of? Have there been arrests made?
I don't, without knowing a specific incident, I I couldn't say, there's nothing. I know I did receive an email about a, the issue of, it sounds like the other night with a garage, somebody being spotted coming from a, it sounded like maybe one of the vacation type homes that's not occupied all the time. So without specifics, I can't say for sure. I haven't heard of of anything, but again, not everything comes across my desk that it happens as far as being able to keep track of that. So if there is anything specific that you would like to know about, if you want to email me or provide that to somebody that can, then we can definitely look into it and see if, see where we're at with it.
Thank you. Got an email to you.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I was, this is Cheryl. I was, I was kind of going to ask some questions along the same line, but we'll send you a separate email. I know, I know an arrest was made in the case where the robbery took place out on Patrick's Point Drive. That home was actually owned by someone who lives in town. And there was an arrest made. What I think we're struggling with was whether or not the other robberies may have been committed by that same individual who was taken into custody. Or do we have someone else or some other people who are who are doing the same? So we had robberies off scenic drive and then one off Underwood Drive and break-ins and robberies and then one. Yeah, so also we'll just say obscene a little further out outside of city limits. So that's a total of, I think, four, two in town and two out of outside of town that Eli's going to mention in the staff report. So we can get some separate information, but I know one of the folks, the one on scenic has really been trying hard to get information that the individuals hawked some of her stuff in in Eureka. And she's been trying to understand, get from the police a photograph of the perpetrator so that she would know or we would all know if it was the same person that was arrested. So anyway, we need to get you more information clearly so you can get us more information and we can, we can start connecting the dots.
Yeah, and yeah, and I, and I know that there was, yeah, that one, that one break in out there where the subject was spotted walking away from the area and then later, you know, contacted by deputies and ended up getting arrested. But yeah, I would have to have some further on those other ones to try and determine if there appears to be any obvious, obvious link or not.
Yeah, that's what we're really, I think, trying to, you know, to to just get it out in the open. I think that's what people are wondering is if it's the same or or different people responsible.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you, Lieutenant McCall.
Thank you.
So I do have my staff report and Ted Pease had added some online advice that he had researched to avoid and prevent. So that's included in the staff report. So to mention that there was large black bear spotted on in U Street and Parker Creek Tribe. They were the one incident happening on the June 7. I haven't heard anything else here. So the trails, we had two trails not allowing any access through those two trails to Old Home Beach. So now we have, as of the Friday before Memorial Day, opened up the Parker Creek Trail and have improved the toe of the trail. Actually redirecting it. Initially, it, there was a large log blocking part of what might have been the trail in the past. And as a result, people were climbing in the area where there's a lot of mud and rocks, which was unstable and awkward. So as a result, we have that hand open Parker Creek Trail. Meanwhile, according to the planning commission, the Axal Lengrum Memorial Trail will remain closed at least until November. And studies are being done regarding restoration plans for that trail, which hopefully will be done July. Make up like. And then, so in order to get down to the Old Home Beach, it suggested to either use the Wagner Street Trail or the Parker Creek Trail. The water plant in there, I had indicated that we have a person who's going to be an operator in training beginning this month. And he'll be, I said in here, taking his T1 because that's what we thought he was, he was preparing for. But he actually is going to try for his T2. So he's studying enough. So we'll see how that lays out. And then our other employee, who was a T2, will be taking his T3 within the next two. And the Taste of Trinidad, which has been happening annually, will be at Saunders Park again this year and will also be on Summer Solstice Day, as it was last year, which is June 21st from 5 to 7. And in the staff report, they had prepared water loss and we had a 23% system water loss. Also, since I prepared the staff report, our city engineer Steve Allen has sent me an email, which he indicated that assessment was done of the Trinidad Water Tank and Pipeline Replacement Project to determine if there was any lead or asbestos in the water tank or the water lines that will be replaced as part of the project. He says, the good news is that there was no lead identified and the only asbestos identified was associated with the actual asbestos cement pipes that exist throughout the city. And then.
Go on.
Yes.
Question. The 23.13% system water loss, is that a leak?
Well, we, we have water loss, which actually has been averaging in the twenties. So so that's what it has been for the.
My confusion with water loss.
Well, in the system itself, the whole system itself, not, not one specifically, but who knows whatever else may be leaking slightly because of the data and water. Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's not uncommon to be close to the 20%. It's been 20.6, 21.5, 22, and then now 23.3. We actually did have a leak that was repaired this past month. So it was, yeah, so it, so this was a little bit higher. Yeah, the leak was actually off of U Street. Okay, the one that just happened. So it was off of U Street and by Murphy's. That was repaired by GR Center. So yeah, that should bring it back down to around 20, hopefully for the next year.
I think that 20 is the kind of an industry average, is it?
Right.
Because I vaguely remember us having that conversation with like the creator principle of the 80/20 rule, right? So.
Right.
So, but the more, but we got down to 10%. Yes, really good.
And I just wanted to remind everyone from our discussion on Monday with Gerald and Steve, indicated that we would be talking about meetings. So I I just want to remind everyone, so when we go to the end and talk about future agenda items, we can remember to talk about the upcoming meetings as far as availability of the council.
Thank you for that reminder. Steven, I was like, oh, yeah. Yeah, so we're, we'll talk about it at the end. We were going to discuss the dates and whether we have a July meeting, vacations and so on. All right, so any, any questions for Eli? Right? With that, then I'm going to go to items from the floor. And at this time, members of the public may comment on items that are not appearing on the agenda. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes or less. Please direct your comments to the council asshole pool. Are there any public comments tonight? Yes, there's Wayne Trapp. Good night.
And I'm here actually on behalf of a friend who I pleaded to come to this meeting and talk. And she was just too, too shy to do it, so I'm kind of doing it for her. And her car, she lives in downtown Trinidad and she parks outside. And her car was vandalized twice during the past two weeks. And she is the most innocuous, apolitical and community minded person you could ever hope to meet. I mean, there is no way that anybody could single her out. And I just wanted people to know that this is going on. I don't know if she reported it or what or not.
And and Elaine, do you know she reported it, made a report?
I don't know. I urged you to. I don't know if she did or not.
Maybe we can check and see.
Yeah, if you can at least let us know at the town hall, you know, her address, we don't want to do it here publicly. So we can follow up with the sheriff. And unfortunately, when the lieutenant was on, we didn't save the public comments. So it might have been a good opportunity to have asked him if that.
Okay, yes, good point. We'll make sure to do that next time, but we'll, we'll follow up. And if anybody else has had problems like that, please reach out and let us know. And also, there's an online reporting tool. If you don't want to have to hassle with calling the sheriff, there's an online reporting tool. The more we report some of these things, the easier it will be for us to follow up. Are there reporting tools on the new website? No, sorry, this is on the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office website. But you know what? I'll put a link to it, maybe so that people all this, yeah, put a recording. Any other public comments? Okay. All right, well, with that, Ben, we are at the consent agenda. So hopefully, everybody's had a chance to kind of look that over. Are there any questions or comments from the council on the consent agenda? And I have none, did you have any? Any public comments on the consent agenda approval or anyone who wants us to pull something out for discussion? I've seen none. Let me bring it back to the council. If anybody would like to.
I'll move to accept the consent agenda.
For a second.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
All right, so we have approved the consent agenda, which brings us to the exciting lineup of discussion and action items that we have for this evening. And we're going to start with a discussion presentation regarding establishing a Trinidad Community Emergency Response Team or CERT program. And I think I mentioned earlier, I was, I had the privilege to attend a training a few weeks ago. It was fabulous, 23 hours. I learned how to fire a fire extinguisher, which I thought I knew how to do, and I really wasn't that great at it at first. So it's really good to, really good to try these things out. So I guess with that, I'd like to turn it over to you, Cliff. And if you want to introduce others, and Gabe will pull up the slides for you.
My name is Cliff Van Kopp. I am, among other things, the team leader for the McKinleyville CERT team. And been invited here to give about 10 minutes worth of what is CERT at a national level and a local level and then some, some experiences from our team, so you can have an idea of what CERT teams are capable of doing. If you have seen these vests anywhere in the community, you've probably seen CERT team members at work helping things out. We're going to, if we can go ahead and go to the next slide. So the problems that we've had here in the county have to do with some volunteer planning that just was not coordinated. There was no way to look up volunteers that had received training in the past. This is my first time in a city council meeting, so let me catch me a breath for just a second. And if you go to the next slide. But it kind of reads through some of the old history. Basically, before 2003, there was pretty much no way to find out what volunteers were available. And I mean, available that had some training, that community governments had the ability to verify who they were, what they knew, have background checking information, things like that. Now, starting in two, there were other problems in our communities here in countywide. And we have these islands of population where the ability to be isolated, if there's a major catastrophe is very high. There's like 18 different identified islands of community and getting people from one place to another. Also, back then, funds were really hard to get because it was on an as need basis, a pay scale kind of a thing. Can we go to the next slide? Starting in 2004, going through 2019, CERT was established. And I'll go over what CERT is a little bit more, but it stands for Community Emergency Response Team. It's a volunteer based team. And really from '04 to '19, we really focused on having two things, having classes to train community members in the 23 hours of training that covers a variety of fixed subjects. It's a nationwide standard training. Starting in, in 2020, we also added a hybrid program online. But there were still this opportunity, this requirement, actually, to be completely successfully complete the training to demonstrate the ability to perform those skills. It's not just read a book and sign in. We also continuously reach out to the public, doing a prepared, emergency preparedness education. For instance, there's a, an event this weekend at the Rancheria in Blue Lake at the Sapphire Palace. It's called Resilience Fair. We have fires on your table for that. It's one thing that CERT, among other response agencies, will be doing. Regardless if you like the idea of CERT or not, I highly encourage people to go out there and see what kind of emergency preparedness ideas they have, how to be prepared before an emergency, how to respond in an emergency and how to recover after an emergency. We also conduct other ongoing training for those members of CERT who have the CERT basic course who want to continue their education. Can you go ahead and answer that question? So CERT, it's a FEMA program. So that it's a nationally standardized program of training for volunteers. And it's a, the reason we, FEMA has, sorry about that, the reason FEMA handles it is so that nationwide, you have a standardized program of training. The purpose of the training for the volunteers to support the emergency first responders when they become overwhelmed in a true disaster or emergency. These are the subjects that are required to be covered in a CERT basic course. So you see up here, there's eight different modules of training over a two and a half day. over a two and a half day period. Typically, it's a Friday afternoon through Sunday evening. I'll actually have a handout, so you don't have to try and keep notes about what those different things are. Uh, here's some examples of CERT students receiving training. Uh, currently, Humboldt Countywide, the training is free to the attendees. Uh, typically, there is a cost associated to the sponsoring agency, and we can talk about that in a little bit. Wait a minute. Now, there, within Humboldt County, there's ten, actually, I think there's eleven that have an updated sheet. Uh, there's a, of CERT teams, Countywide. A CERT team has to have a sponsoring agents. Typically, it's a state, Arcata. Lake, and on and on, all have, a lot of them have. Same dude, trying to figure them all out.
Yeah, McKinleyville, you guys are from McKinleyville, right?
We're from McKinleyville. We are the northernmost. And so our sponsor, because McKinleyville is a small city, our sponsor is the County Office of Emergency Services. Uh, Bridgeville is in the same situation as we are. So the county OES is our sponsoring agency. The strength of sponsoring agencies, they have the connection to the professional first responders, typically seen as fire, police, and emergency medical services. And uh, all of our members in the McKinleyville CERT team, uh, they had a transfer. This is an old sheet. The reason we have a new one that I just handed out is because Rio Del was just standing up. We held training there a couple of months ago, and now Rio Del was a CERT team. We don't have a budget. We have grants and donations for how we are funded. Um, different sponsoring agencies have different venues. Uh, I mentioned earlier that there is Humboldt CERT Coalition. That CERT Coalition combines the services, the leadership teams of each of the participating CERT teams countywide meet on a every other month basis so that we can collaborate training, so we can share resources, so we can exchange best practices and new ideas, so we can put our idea, our training together. Uh, quite often, one team will have training and invite all the other members to attend as well. And by training, I'm talking about things beyond the basic CERT course, the twenty-three hour course. Uh, recently, we had a four hour course on traffic and crowd management. Uh, recent, uh, we have, uh, training on stop and bleed, which is tourniquets and wound packing, advanced first aid. Utilities, how to turn lock utilities safely during a disaster, the list goes on and on. So the Humboldt CERT Coalition, and this is a development, I got the word last night that a PowerPoint presentation would be welcome here. So what you're seeing is something I cobbled together about midnight last night, so it's not the most professional thing in the world. But it gets, I wanted to try and get the idea as quick as possible. Go ahead to the next. Um, when we have training, these are, you see here, here's a typical setup of the, of the PPE is personal detective equipment, uh, gloves, hard hat, backpack to carry things around in. These vests are best similar to them, and a variety of other knee pads and protective equipment so that CERT members have protection when they go out. That, go ahead, yeah, go to that one. So McKinleyville CERT, I mentioned earlier, we're sponsored by the OES. We opened in two thousand and nineteen. We have about twenty active members. By that, I mean those are members who show up for monthly meetings, which include a training segment each month. Uh, we have about fifty additional members of the McKinleyville and McKinleyville area that are on our mail list that don't show up, but do like to stay vested and and connected with CERT idea. Uh, our function in McKinleyville, we have chose to expand it into being an incubator for other communities. We realize we're the only team north of the Mad River. The county goes a whole lot farther. So we have people like Larry here who lives in Trinidad, but and has had CERT training, there's no team here, so we have invited him to actively participate in our team in order to maintain and his, uh, his enthusiasm, his momentum, his training and so forth. We also have members from Field Brook and surrounding areas that are active members in our team. We need monthly, we, that includes training about every three months, quarterly. We have typically a four hour training segment on the weekend to advance, at least keep our skills up to date and advance them. Um, I mentioned before, we're active with OES. One of the things our sponsors choose to do is conduct background, background investigations. Your risk manager people will be pleased by that kind of information. You know the caliber of your volunteers should you choose to use them. Uh, you can use them in, uh, not only, you can invite them to participate in events that are scheduled, like the the upcoming, uh, you have the Fish Fair, or if you have the Clam Beach Boat, things like that. It's always nice to have volunteers that you know because you've got a background check, because they've received this training and you know the caliber of background skills that they have. Uh, so that you, you just know more about them in advance, so that if there is a, an actual emergency and you need people, you know the caliber of people you're getting, the skills that they have. Um, our, we choose to have our members who are vetted sign up as California Disaster Service Worker Volunteers. That provides a little bit of extra, um, protection insurance should they get hurt while they're doing something. So your liability people, kind of like that. So, uh, go ahead to the next. Here's a picture of a, for instance, this is like thirteen of our members. Eventually, we had seven more sign up uh, to participate in a variety of different activities in support of the corporate pandemic that we work with OES. Uh, at the bottom, it's hard to read, but we provided over six hundred accountable volunteer hours. If you've ever had a FEMA grant and we needed to provide matching funds, they get, those hours count directly towards the matching funds. Go to the next slide. Uh, I I know that this is the kind of slide you never do in PowerPoint, but I'm going to stop here and give you a chance to screen that with your own eyes to get some ideas of some of the things we've done. On the tables are two shutterfly books that have various pictures of McKinleyville team doing different exercises. So you can get an idea of what a CERT team can do, has done in the past few years around here. Training typically is twenty-three hours. I mentioned four to, or Friday afternoon through Sunday evening. We, if you choose to consider having a course, you'll want to have a location where you can have tables and chairs for forty or so people, restaurants. If you want to have food, you probably want to have kitchen kind of things. But what, what we need is, um, space inside the whole class, a space outside to hold drills. We'll have fire drills, we'll do what's called cribbing, getting heavy things up off of people safely. We'll do searches of the local area to find people. The typical drill will, this will end to be like there was a big earthquake, that's the number one thing up here. And we're searching the area to see what kind of damage to the building, to see that there are people that are hurt anywhere, and to render emergency first aid to them, to stabilize them, get them, and get them to a safe place. Uh, we do light firefighting, we do light search and rescue. Uh, we're not the people that you call if the house is on fire. But we are the people that if we're in a, doing a search on a house and we notice a small fire, we can put out in five seconds or less. We're going to be on it and then keep it from ever. Why, I really want to honor the ten minute limit that I was asked to do and leave five minutes to questions. So at that point, um, the other things I didn't mention is typically, if you want to have a class, the minimum starting is about thirty-five hundred dollars. And that provides all of the equipment that we bring, all of the instructors that we provide, the instructors, like myself, many have been trained as instructors. And so you have certified instructors giving a nationally standardized, uh, training that you can refer to our, one of our recent graduates for more details about. And beyond that, I won't set it up to question.
Yeah, we'd like to, I'd like to just say one thing really quick about context, which is last winter, I think most of you remember the power outages, the storms and so forth. And there were just a lot of folks in the surrounding area in Trinidad that didn't have water, didn't have heat, there are oxygen tanks that couldn't plug them in, I could go on. And fortunately, you know, organically, we pulled together some volunteers and, you know, several, a bunch of them were in the room here um, who came in and just willingly helped, but to have a pool of volunteers that we could call upon, that to me is one of the big benefits of CERT. You know, trained volunteers that in a moment's notice, we can just bring them all up, and we've got some folks to come here to the town hall or wherever and and respond. And so that's, that's a big deal. And then I think also the readiness that you mentioned, Cliff, is another big one because so many people that we talked to weren't ready. They didn't have water, they didn't have basic food staples and things like that, and didn't really think they would need them until they found out that their electricity wasn't going to come on for two or three weeks, which was a huge, huge gap. But anyway, so that's my, that's the kind of context for why I thought this sounded interesting for the city. And with that, I will, um, let everybody else ask their question.
I can follow onto that. If those people who volunteered happened to have a two thousand watt generator available, that would have made it even easier. Those of you who came through the front door or the side door itself, this big beast, this big trailer that some yahoo parked out in your, in the school parking lot. If Trinidad stands up a CERT team, we can make that trailer available to that team at no cost.
Hey.
Uh, one of the other CERT teams, Humboldt Bay Fire CERT team, was able, through a series of, through a really big ramp, able to lock on a number of trailers, and we grabbed that trailer in McKinleyville with the hopes of staging it on the north side of the river. Because if there's a big problem, that bridge may be a real barrier. The other thing I want to mention about, instead of relying on us to come up when we can, McKinleyville CERT is sponsored by OES. That means we open, answer to OES and OES. If you sponsor a CERT team, they answer to you. You can contact them and say, hey, we need help here, here, when you want, not when OES can be convinced to maybe send somebody up.
All right. Any questions or?
I have one. Uh, thank you, Cliff, very much for the presentation. Uh, for a town of this size, what ballpark would, would we need to have a, you know, a bona fide CERT team here in Trinidad? How many people?
I think Ferneal has about, isn't it the last class? And they're standing more up.
Yeah.
Rio Del, they had like twenty-two in there.
Is there any kind of like requirement, right, to the standardized program around the country?
Is, the training is standardized, and what happens? FEMA says, here's the CERT program, here's the training required nationwide. The state, in this case, California OES, manages the CERT program within each state.
Got it.
And then the state turns over the authority to whoever the sponsoring agency is. So we, in McKinleyville, answer to whatever OES, Arcata CERT team answers to what Arcata PPE wants. Field Brook's, uh, not Field Brook's, uh, Blue Lake's city team answers to the fire department. Blue Lake also has a tribal team and they answer to Rancheria. And you get to kind of set the standard, whatever you want.
Got it. And then, uh, you said monthly trainings or monthly meetings of four hours apiece?
No, quarterly four hours.
Okay.
We have, McKinleyville chooses to have, uh, at least a half hour training segment in the hour and a half. Any of you who wish to just see what a meeting looks like, you're welcome to join us at the Red Cross office across from the fire, across from the airport in the Mad River or the business park there on the, on the twentieth, whatever the fourth Tuesday of this month is, it's six thirty. We'll be having a meeting, certainly welcome to stop by. I know I threw a lot at you, and this is, I gave you one of the things. I gave you these. This is a kind of an informal collection of notes, which you passed.
Yes, yeah. While we're doing that, are there other counselors I did, or questions?
I'd like to make something.
And then, yes, oh, please, Larry.
Uh, at the end of this month, I'm going to be creating a CERT structure. And so, uh, so hopefully we'll have a local educator in the area as well.
That's terrific. That's a great resource. I want to give the public a chance, unless there were questions or comments from the council, I'd like to give the public a chance to ask any questions or make any comments that they may have. Please, yes, come to the podium if you wouldn't mind.
Hey, everybody, Aaron Bacon, Red Bull City. This is an amazing program. Uh, I'm experienced with it, having been a CERT trainer down professionally in the Bay Area. As you know, I wear both the volunteer fire cutter hat as well as a career one. Um, also, I'm a last geologist and a former life, so, uh, this, this really would be a great thing for us to have in our area. Uh, I think it would be a great idea for the city to sponsor it. I would highly, highly encourage the city to expand the reach. One thing, spending many hours here in December, that became very clear is it's the greater Trinidad community. Right, and and, you know, it's part of this big lagoon and as far south as the river, right, west tape, there's a big group that we can pull in, get volunteers from. Um, you know, like I said, I trained in the past, so I can certainly be up to become certified as a trainer again and offer that as well as a book thing. Um, this is just a really nice way for neighbors to help the neighbors. And Humboldt County, uh, since I've come here, I've learned we're a lot more rural sometimes than we remember, particularly when it comes to emergency response. And so not if, but when the big disaster comes for us, we will be depending upon ourselves. We had a very small, safe, secure taste in December. We got a big thing that takes out water, takes out power, those types of things for a long period of times. We're really going to be dependent on each other, so it makes just all the sense in the world to, to train ourselves how to do it and help each other out, so. Thanks for taking us to do it.
Thanks, sir. Um, you have a comment right behind me, Larry, and then you. I, this gentleman had his hand up.
It's Jeff Austin, live just outside Trinidad, city limits, on a plane. Just retired here after thirty years for SURT, so I'm not ending up as a safety educator. And, uh, also the national student. So when I heard that there might be a possibility of a CERT team forming, I became very excited, and that's why I think it would be a very good program. Went, I went through the training in the Bay Area. But I also read it, I think it, it's occurred to me, especially after a presentation was done in the Grange Hall in Humboldt Hill about the, the last earthquake we had, the possible severity of the next one, the Cascadia fall. And it occurred to me that, that we have lowlands on either side of the city, you know, the little river and the booms. And at least temporarily, we could be cut off. So I think having, um, people here to be able to help and respond and get involved would be really, really valuable, and I certainly.
Thank you. Welcome to the community.
I'm speaking, yes, I'm a resident of the area, Lurie, Pittsburgh. I lived forty years in Trinidad, but I live in rural Trinidad, not urban. So, uh, I'm, I'm outside the city limits, but, um, I've been actively involved in emergency preparation for our rural area, I live on St. George Road, and, uh, we are all, uh, very, um, self reliant as, as much as possible. Uh, I want to point out that after the Rio Del earthquake, uh, OES did, um, organize, uh, they, they authorized the McKinleyville team to do a house by house, uh, check ins. And so even though you don't have a team here, I surveyed the entire, uh, St. George Road uh, to see if there was any damage or anything to report at that time. And one of the things I did notice is a lot of people don't have generators. And so there was a power outage, and there was, uh, other things that affected people. And some people needed to, uh, you know, keep their fridges going, so I was able to bring my generator over and help power some of their refrigerators. So, uh, it's a neighbor to neighbor, uh, helping, you know, service. So I do know that, as you just saw here, there are several people in this community who are already trained. Uh, they are just living here, but there are probably half a dozen CERT trained people right now. And I would be willing to help promote it over at Murphy's, uh, Market. Uh, we have this. And I would be willing to help promote it over at Murphy's Market. We have this trailer up here now, I'd like to show it and tell people this is something that we'd be proud of. So I would like to see about promoting this if the city does decide to go forward with this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Please.
My name's Deanna Norrell. I live here in Trinidad. I'm not CERT certified. I don't have any backgrounds at all, but I just wanted to come to this meeting to say I'm excited. I'm so excited that this is, we're having this session that we're considering this. It's super important, behind it all the way. I even hope that maybe one day beyond setting up a CERT team, we'll be in a position to talk about how we're be preparing for resiliency in, in a lot of big systemic ways, including the response. But yeah, just really want to encourage, thank you.
Depend on this forward, I think this would be really great. Thanks. Thank you. Other public comments? Anything? Richard Johnson, I think I see your hand up online.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate it. This has been really a great presentation and I, I really, really am excited about this. Just a couple of comments real fast. Larry kind of touched on it and I think it's very important that we engage the areas outside of the city limits to the maximum that we can, recognizing of course that, yes, they are part of the Humboldt County jurisdiction for this kind of thing. But we're so close to Trinidad and we have such connections that I really believe that it's important that we try to stay as closely coupled as possible on this. For example, in our area, in Baker Ranch, we have all taken first aid training. We have amateur radios, we have CB radios, and we've done everything that we believe possible to be prepared, but we would really appreciate being part of a greater community to take advantage of this program and other capabilities that, that are available. One of the things I think that was touched on a little bit before was about portable generators. And I really like that idea. And one of the things that I think would be very important would be able to have generators capable of powering some of the smaller community water systems in our area. I know that there's at least three or four. And if there was a generator available, that would be large enough to power a small community. If they don't have a generator so that they could provide water, that would be a tremendous benefit, I think, to the entire community. So I'm looking forward to getting more involved in this and I think this is a great program and thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. Are there other public comments? Sir? Please, if you don't mind coming to the, just a thumbs up? Okay, okay. For those of you online, we just have a community member who just gave us a thumbs up. So thank you for that. All right. So I want to bring it back to the council. I do, I do think that the proposal is sort of a greater Trinidad area group. And Cliff, I'm sorry, did you have something you wanted to add? You're standing, but no, no, you're fine. Please, in case we may have more questions.
Speaking of, I was experienced with those that just seems to be Rio Del. There's all these different cities or part of county. Is it something where the city can take on a whole community outside of the city?
Do, do, whatever you want. For the longest time, Fortuna was considering the Hill River Valley. And Fortuna said, and Fortuna is standing as this team, again, really, if you're sponsoring the team, you can set the parameters. You can say, anybody from McKinleyville North and the county that wants to be on our team, you're welcome. You have a lot of, you have a lot of autonomy that if you have your own team.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the things we'll discuss is, you know, greater Trinidad area CERT team. Tonight's a discussion and presentation, so this was informative. We're not making a decision necessarily tonight. We will, until we've agendized that, but we may look at that for July. So. But any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to be sure. I understood you said it was thirty-five hundred to present the training like what we did.
If you want us to come and do the CERT training, we need a minute or thirty. And that's bare bones. We won't have food, but we will have all of the equipment. We'll have, I meant for this to get passed around, but then I dropped the ball. This is an example. This is one of the participant manuals. So this amount of material will get covered over the twenty, the twenty-three hours of training. It covers the subjects that are on that handout I gave you, that eight different things.
And then all the PPE that you mentioned and so. So it's really for training, but we also have an opportunity that McKinleyville may give us that, set that trailer that we could use.
That trailer is dual-axial, six by twelve, with six and a few inches. I wish I had it because it doesn't hit my head. It's enclosed with a drop gate on the back and a side door. It's probably got about forty percent, fifty percent of the equipment it needs. There's already some medical equipment, triage, tarp, for mass casualties, setting the mass casualty areas, and a generator, a new 2,000 watt generator and a bunch of other stuff. Normally I would open it and let's take a look at it, but we're going to have to get it out.
And that, that thirty-five hundred dollars, that's the, the training for the twenty-three hours. Is there an annual cost that the city should be thinking about?
You're going to probably think if you're going to have, if you're going to request background checks, whatever those are going to cost you.
Yeah.
If you're going through the county, I think it's.
Forty-six bucks.
Something like that. If you want to have liability insurance for your people, it just means that you can use them for more unscheduled events or scheduled events. You may want to have people take a look at that, but there is no annual fee to be in CERT. There is a requirement on annual basis to register and you just go on, spend about five minutes on the internet saying, yeah, we're still here and this kind of stuff is done. So it keeps them in check.
I think it's been very informative. Thank you. You guys did a fabulous job. Really appreciate it. And thank you, members of the community for sharing your insights. And then we will look to bring this back to the council for, I guess, a financial decision.
Well, I, I was going to suggest that we, if the council agrees, that we direct staff to, to come up with, you know, maybe a possible way of recruiting, right? This little river to big lagoon kind of thing. You know, thirty-five hundred bucks, do we have that in the budget? What do we need for insurance, the things that Cliff just mentioned? And see what, what feasibility. I, I don't think it's going to be hard to get, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty people if we have this larger area, right? We have a problem in Trinidad of getting volunteer fire fighters only just because of our size, but we're only a square mile. So we're, we're in a much, really, we, we look, I look at this more like a watershed approach, like, or the Murphysphere approach, like who shops at Murphy's? That's who we want to, to cover by this, right?
Sphere.
That's the Murphysphere. So.
I also want to remind you on those numbers issue, there's a variety of people that have already received CERT training in the community.
Right, right.
And if there is a nexus they can focus on, they'll come out of the loop.
Yeah. Anyway, that would be my suggestion is that we, that we have sort of a, what would the city, what could the city provide? Because if we're the, if we're the sort of the, the center of this, but we're serving a larger area, what are we able to, to contribute? What are we able with staff time to manage, right? It's easy to say, here, let's do this thing, but it's, it's a lot of work to, to reach a lot, large number of people, right? So.
Yeah. And I'd probably, one thing to point out too on the staff time, and then we probably need to move on because we've got a couple more things, but is, is that this is a volunteer organization. So, so we would be looking to have an emergency, well, we were, the rancheria suggested to us, they have a tribal emergency response team or TIR. And they suggested that we have an emergency response manager. And, and we were able to get a volunteer by the name of Aaron Hakinen, who said that he would be our emergency response manager if we set up a CERT team. Aaron? What'd you say?
It's in the minutes.
That one. Yes. I'll help. Anyway, so, so hopefully the staff time would be, but, but yes, I, I love the idea of having the staff come back at the next meeting, depending on when that is.
What's feasible.
Yeah, what's feasible, what can we do? We can talk about it when we get to the budget tonight too. Like maybe there's grant money or GoFundMe or city budget and some combination thereof. So. But anyway, if it sounds interesting, then we'll, we'll face that.
So, meeting once a month, how many hours in that meeting every month, commitment?
We choose to have a, an hour and a half long meeting, of which I typically carve thirty minutes specifically for some kind of training or whatever, usually just for pressure stuff. And then the orderly training is usually much more in depth. You can, you get to set that up yourself. Some meetings meet for, some groups meet for an hour on CERT, that's it. And other groups meet for two hours and do a lot of training. It's, you get to set that yourself. To the idea of recruiting, we can easily come and do a, I can do an hour-long presentation of emergency fairness, maybe even kind of be raised a slide. We can, I already mentioned, doing staging events by training. I mean, sit down at the table and invite them to complete. And engage in the public. Do you know what CERT is or any news?
Okay, great. So we'll, we'll discuss in our future meeting whether Trinidad will have a sponsored CERT team, make that decision if we, and identify budget. And then we can talk about kind of next steps on, that sound fair to you guys?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for guys. All right. So next up is another very exciting topic for the community, which is traffic calming measures for New Street and Ocean Avenue and Hector Street parking improvements. And, and actually, yeah, traffic calming in general. So Eli, I'm going to turn it over to you. I'm not sure. Oh, is Josh presenting? Okay.
Well, from TUC and he will be talking about traffic calming and we have slides. Of course, it's in the.
You guys hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Good evening. Just give me one second to share my screen here. All right. Can you see the screen coming through?
Yep.
All right. Well, good evening. Thanks again for having me. Pleasure to be back to provide an update on the View Ave and Ocean Ave traffic calming strategies. So just some quick background. So this is a follow-up to the March meeting where we first came and discussed some of the concerns around Ocean and View Avenue. Some of those are listed here. I'll just run through those quickly. So, you know, one of the main concerns really was the fact that it seems like folks are just using these, you know, small, local residential streets as a bypass to get through town and avoid Main and Trinity Street. So people are seeing, you know, an increased volume of traffic on the roads, both View and Ocean Ave. As a result, you're also seeing higher vehicle speeds. There's just people again traveling at, you know, higher unsafe rates of speeds on these, these smaller roads and then vehicle sizes. So again, these are very narrow residential roads and there's been a few larger RVs, some motorhomes, trucks, things of that nature that just don't seem appropriate for roads of this nature. So at that March meeting, we talked about just briefly some potential options, some of which are listed here. So we talked about potentially implementing speed humps. We looked at radar feedbacks, speed limit signs. An example of that is shown in the bottom center. And we also looked at or talked about some potential just signage improvements, additional speed limit signs. Or even possibly, I don't understand, choose the context, do a little research on our side and report back to you on some next steps, suggestions, which is why we're here today. So after looking at the roads and thinking about the issues, what we are suggesting is really a phased approach. So first, looking at what I would call some low hanging fruit, some improvements that could be implemented quickly and at a relatively low cost. And then over time, taking a look, seeing if we're getting the desired results that we're after. And if not, then looking to implement some additional improvements, kind of step things up until we, we get the results that we're after. So what I'm showing here is what we'll call phase one. So what we suggest first is look to install four local traffic-only advisory signs. There are the signs shown here in yellow. So it'd essentially be two signs on Ocean Ave, a northbound and southbound sign, kind of at the limits of the residential area, as well as a sign on West Street and then one on View Street as well. I want to point out, these are advisory signs as opposed to regulatory signs. So these are not enforceable. These are really signs intended to draw attention to the fact that these roads are not
Josh, just so you know, you're breaking up.
City Bandits showing the PowerPoint slides.
Anyone able to text?
Yeah, text.
Okay.
We can see you, Josh. We just can't hear you.
All right, I'm back. Can you hear me? Do you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah. You can turn off your camera and that'll help with the bandwidth, I think.
Yeah, Gabe, Gabe, if you're there, why don't you share that presentation? That'll make it easier too. All right, perfect. Yeah, why don't you go back up one, Gabe, to that phase one? Where did you guys lose me at?
Phase one.
Beginning?
The, when you were saying that the yellow signs are advisory only.
Got it. Okay. Apologies for that, that snafu. So yes, these are advisory only, meaning they're not regulatory, they're not enforceable. So these are signs intended to draw attention to the area and let motorists know that these are not, these roads are not intended as through thoroughfares. They're really intended for residential traffic only. In addition, we suggest replacing the existing fifteen mile an hour speed limit signs. There actually are two on View Ave and there's one on Ocean Ave. Currently, we suggest replacing those, putting in four new signs. The existing signs are a little bit dated. The, the font on them is not, not up to current standards. And they're also, don't have great visibility, retro reflectivity. So just replacing those to draw better attention to them, make them more visible would be included as part of this. So again, really a low cost improvement. We show here a couple thousand dollars, but really this is something that could be installed by public work staff and even of, you know, much less money, maybe hundreds of dollars. It could be implemented pretty quickly. Gabe, move to the next slide, please. So, you know, again, if the phase one improvements aren't getting the desired results, we could look to do sort of the next phase of improvements. And with this, what we suggest is looking to make the Ocean Ave intersection with West and East, a four-way controlled stop intersection. Currently, there are stop signs in both East and West Streets. So what this would do is add additional stop signs to Ocean Ave. Again, just to, you know, decrease that length of uncontrolled roadway on Ocean Ave, help to slow down speeds and also help to deter folks who want to use Ocean as that bypass for Trinity Street. We're listing here that a cost is about $4,000. I think it could be a bit less. The signs themselves are cheaper with stop signs and new stop controlled intersections. You have to do some additional striping, which is kind of specialized work. You have to bring a contractor to do that work. So the cost would be a little bit higher. Go to the next slide, please, Gabe. And then if, you know, again, we're still not seeing the desired results, then we could go to something that's a bit more permanent and a more intensive improvement. And this would be the speed humps that we talked about at the original or at the council meeting back in March. So what we, we would suggest is four speed humps in total, two on Ocean and two on View. Cost of these, a little bit more. We're estimating them at about fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars. And if council does decide to pursue an improvement of this, this matter, like we talked about the previous council, I would suggest that there be an outreach campaign to the local residents to ensure that they are supportive of the speed humps. There are a few negatives that come around with speed humps, namely they can be noisy at times. It's the noise associated with vehicles, both decelerating and accelerating after they come up to and pass the speed hump and then also the noise. the noise associated with the suspension of vehicles as it collapses, as it does impact the speed hump. So they do have some noise. Um, in addition, they do slightly reduce emergency vehicle response times. So it's always a good idea to do some outreach to local uh, police and fire to ensure that they are supportive of them as well. Go to the next slide. So this, this last slide here, this is just a a summary of those, those three phases that we discussed, giving me a, the potential costs for each one. Um, there, and I also did list a couple other options at the bottom there, things that we had talked about in the past. So certainly there is an option if, if council wants to proceed, uh, looking to prohibit trucks on these roads. Um, I did do a little research and what it would take is an ordinance from council to essentially designate Main and Trinity as a truck route through town. And at the same time prohibit those trucks on Ocean and View. At that point, you could move forward with actually regulatory signing, um, which is enforceable to prohibit trucks on those roads. Uh, radar feedback signs were the other ones that we had talked about in the past. Um, also a good improvement, they do come with a cost of about eight thousand dollars each. Um, you'd be looking at, you know, two to four of those on this road. They would essentially replace those fifteen mile an hour signs. Um, they are effective. Uh, they do tend to, um, you know, adherence to them can, can reduce over time as people get used to them. They can tend to sort of ignore the feedback readings that they're getting on those signs. Um, they also do require maintenance over time and ultimately replacements. So there is certainly a long-term cost with them. And they can be a nuisance in residential areas because they are a lighted sign. When vehicles pass by, you're gonna get an LED feedback and at night that can be a bit of a nuisance. So with that, I'm gonna pause, um, and see if you guys have any questions or comments.
Thank you, Josh. Uh, questions from the council?
Real quick, Josh, the, the sign that says speed hump, uh, is there also a, a speed limit sign that is needed with speed humps to tell you what, what they're rated for or whatever?
Yeah, you often do pair a advisory speed sign with the speed hump. So very often you'd see a fifteen mile an hour yellow sign on those speed hump signs. I'd have to look and see if that would actually be required. On a low volume residential street like this, I honestly don't think it would. I think you could get by with just the speed hump sign in addition to the speed limit signs. Um, but it's something that we, we would have to look at.
Cause I'm interested in, in the, you know, fewer signs, right? One sign that says speed hump fifteen miles an hour. Yeah. That's a possibility.
Yeah, that would be an option. If, if, if that was the preference, then those speed limit signs would not be necessary, certainly. Those are optional.
Is the, is the local traffic only, is that something that you feel like is just common, very commonly used and, and people will understand what that means? I mean, I guess it's a leading question. I, I guess when I looked at it, I thought, well, you know, somebody might think, well, I'm, I'm going local. I'm just gonna go locally down the street. And I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be, you know, s- a smart at like, I'm.
And I'm assuming that was a question for council, not me. Apologies if that was directed towards me.
Yeah, sorry. We'll open to public comments in a second, Josh, and I'll, I'll ask where folks to come up to the microphones so you can hear better, but, um, in the meantime, a- any other comments or questions from the council?
The local traffic is just another ugly sign to add in. I, I like the fifty mile an hour. I like the speed humps. Our biggest, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think a lot of the parents drop off their kids at the school and they just move around to East. I feel like there would be a way for them to loop back around Trinity Street back instead of going through town. That would help alleviate a lot of the traffic in the mornings and afternoons. There's a sign or some type of, you can't really do a U-turn in those narrow, narrow streets unless you do the roundabout.
And roundabout's not a true roundabout. We were talking about that last time we were there. I think Steve mentioned that.
It's not a round, not even a false roundabout.
Not even a.
It's a, it's a water garden, so.
It doesn't really allow space for like a truck or an RV to turn around. It's, it's unfortunate.
But it, but it is used by the buses. That area is used by the buses. So there, I mean, if you wanted to, to kind of create this recommendation for the, the school drop-off, it's like keep on going down Trinity Street and do like the buses do to get out of town. Go around Hector and whatnot and, and head out, but that would be more of a school kind of education program, if you will, for, for parents dropping off.
Yeah, and that might be something good to do in addition to.
And also, uh, there was talk about getting the speed on Underwood on that blind corner. Um, was that on those?
He's just focusing on Ocean and View.
Are you still with us, Josh?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. It's hard to tell if those questions are being directed at me.
Yeah, uh, yeah, he, he was asking, uh, about a potential speed up, uh, on Underwood.
Yeah, we have not looked at that. Um, you know, coming away from the last council meeting, the direction, as I understood, it was really specific to Ocean and View.
Right, so that's what the parameter is right now, but if the council desires that, we can have, uh, Josh look at that, so. Alright, Commissioner, uh, excuse me, council member, I thought it would like us to look at that. Is that, Eli, are you comfortable with that to look at Underwood as well or?
Yeah, sure.
Alright.
Uh, I, I had a question, uh, Katie, very much. Um, so as the R, I live on Ocean and as the RVs come coming to town and come down from the dead, there's only one or two ways out and, uh, they come whipping down the street. And the things that, you know, as long as the city law. Things like the, the speed bump and speed limit signs would be something of a deterrent, at least to speed. It's not gonna stop traffic. Is that correct?
Yeah, apologies. And I couldn't make out exactly what that question was.
Okay, updated.
My understanding correctly, that the suggestions will not stop traffic flow on Ocean and View because people coming into town have no way to turn around. They have to go back through Ocean and View. It'll slow the speed, that's all.
Did you hear that, Josh? I, I think the answer.
Personally, to certainly deter traffic from utilizing, understand your concern, folks.
What is, I said, say that again, Josh? Yeah, so she was asking basically, these, uh, methods that you're, um, suggesting don't stop the flow of traffic down Ocean and View. In your opinion, they're just, it's just slowing it down, correct? I think that's correct.
Yeah, that's.
So wait, yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's not. However, I guess my hunch would be that it will be a deterrent over time if we didn't those things because once somebody goes down the street and it's, you know, challenging for them or challenging, they might decide to go down and just turn around at the harbor and come back out or turn around at the intersection, which is probably. Um, any other comments from the council? Okay, uh, let me open to public comments about the, this part of the traffic calming, uh, proposal. The phased improvements for Ocean of View. Any public comments? Alright, I see Mr. Hayden.
My father here. Um, I, uh, just a couple of things. I did have a couple of questions or comments to Josh and I guess, uh, some is kind of of your overall basic approach. I guess the first one is my question of the, uh, price point for the speed humps. Uh, I, I passed the metal ones before and I can try them again, but there are rubberized ones that have like a fifteen year warranty. That you can get four of them or seven thousand, that's half the cost of the posts. And they're removable and we can order them and they ship in one to two days. So just putting that out there.
Not from Amazon.
I don't care. Um, the other question, so I guess just if there's perfectionism, you know, I would see assholes for people understanding that. Like proof of concept.
In all seriousness, can we get Josh's take on that in terms of, like, is it specialized installation?
I mean, it, it, it's structured to right there. You drill, they tell you what drill bit, there's oxy, there's expansion bolts that go in, they screw in place and then you're done.
Okay.
They're color coded, like black, yellow, black.
Yeah, I remember talking about this last time because we just, we thought that we could do it for.
The other point, Steve generally, you know, I'm, I'm sign adverse, right? Um, and so I suggested before the March meeting, but painting speed limits on the street. And I was pleased to hear Josh, uh, mention the three existing speed limit signs and I agree they could be placed better, but they're still there. You can see them if you're willing to see them, but they're, they're not effective. Signs, in my opinion, are not effective if there's not enforcement, right? A passive thing. It's not gonna have any effect. Dog, these signs, all fifty of them that be owned now. There are three across the street from me and I watch people several times a week. Literally doing a circuit between three signs off-leash with their dogs. So the signs, you know, passive stuff doesn't work. Um, but I did just want to kind of speak to a few things here, um, other things, uh, the, the four-way stop sign. I don't know how I feel about that. I can tell you from observation, the stop signs at the end of East and West joining Ocean are already very infrequently followed. So adding two more is just two more signs that aren't followed. The one that coming up that, you know, people have habits, people, you know, doesn't make it right, but is, we're trying to solve a problem of speed. You know, is that necessarily gonna do it? Um, again, with that enforcement. The noise needs that Josh mentioned, I'm sensitive to that. I already get a tremendous amount of noise from the commercial district in town that I'm very close to on Wednesdays on Great Day in particular, but I'm already hearing people speeding up as they go down the wide section of, of View and come to the narrow section where there is the, you know, residential section again. So there's always that, that, that sound concerns there. Um, the school traffic is absolutely an issue. It's very time driven. Um, I think a solution, uh, to find a, a spot that to circle around needs to happen on school property. Otherwise, we're simply moving the problem somewhere else. Uh, the school has that round, you know, the parking lot. Perhaps they could come up with something and at least educate people to start the school year. I think that would be a great approach, but there are schools that manage their own pickup and drop-offs in big areas. Uh, so I think they might have the space to do it. Um, the emergency response issue, as someone that's been responding in, in the license sirens for coming up on thirty years, I appreciate that perspective. I, I will tell you that it has never once gotten in my way. Um, on short residential streets, but speed humps are small like this and they're not great distances to be traveled. I just don't see it as a meaningful concern. The other thing, uh, with the, the radar feedback signs, um, they make them, I've done a bit of research on this topic, uh, that you can mount to signposts, right? So instead of buying them that are fixed on these streets, I think a smarter use of the city's money, um, and, and to help eliminate fatigue from people, oh, there's that sign that's gonna flash. You could move around town. You just bolt to an existing pole and then move around and change it up. And they also have time of day settings on some of them as well, so. I appreciate this phased approach. My personal belief is, I think that's gonna be six thousand dollars that we're gonna spend and then we're gonna find ourselves. I will be back again because I'm of the opinion that those, uh, address the speed. And to Katie's point, there's two separate kind of discussions. There is traffic management is a greater issue. This is just simply my, in a speed discussion on these two streets. Not trying to divert traffic because once somebody turns down in their RV, they're committed same thing with those local traffic signs. So that's just kind of my thoughts on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Josh, did you wanna, uh, provide any comments about the cost of the speed humps?
Yeah, so I, I think what you're describing are speed bumps, rubberized speed bumps. They're not normally used on, um, you know, public roadways. They're more used in commercial areas, commercial parking lots, things like that. Um, these are larger parabolic speed humps, which are something more typical that you see on these settings. Um, so yeah, the co- the cost is more. It is a much more robust installation. It's hot mixed asphalt. Not a, not something that's just bolted down.
I, I will just say to that, Josh, they offer both products. So the ones I refer to are the wider parabolic ones that are lower in profile than a speed bump, which is as I learned, tend to have a higher height on.
Maybe, um, we can provide, um, if you have a link to that, um, Aaron, we can provide that to Josh and then have him come back and see if there's any opportunity to get something that's a little lower cost. It does sound like this is permanent. Well, I guess they're both permanent though, right?
Uh, I, I've seen what I think you're talking about in Blue Lake, uh, just east of the city. You're going out towards, um, Corvale. There's a small road. There's a, there's a community road. Out all around. We have three speed bump signs in Ocean because they're terrible for bicycles. So if I drive down, I have to find a way around it, but there's three of them, uh, and I just don't know the road, but I just saw the, if you lead Blue Lake, downtown Blue Lake, uh, we have three of them. I believe that's what you're talking about. So there is a sample of them out there. If you want to see what they're talking.
That's a good idea. So maybe it's, um, maybe we can, anybody who wants to spend some time, take a look or Josh has time to look at those and you know, we've all kind of pulled up online various, you know, hump options and um, found some less expensive ones. So, you know, we're just looking for an opportunity to reduce costs, I guess. Sorry, Josh, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, no, I appreciate the, uh, the information. I'll try to take a look at those ones in Blue Lake as well.
Alright. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Josh.
There was one more, uh, when we were talking about it. We wanted this big trucks to turn and ease out instead of going down Mission Street. Uh, I thought there was a conversation about having big trucks and, and RVs to make a lap and that was.
Yeah, I think there was a discussion about just how to handle the big trucks and RVs.
Because they're gonna come around anyways, a lot of better practices and, uh, but you, you, you don't wanna go down Ocean when going back towards Trinity. So maybe there's just, right? Some type of signage.
Hi, Dorothy, um, we also have a, a public comment. So we're still in public comment and I'm gonna bring it back to the council. So Dorothy, you're, you're up. Yeah. Yeah, I'm just keeping it.
I, this is deja vu, deja vu. I can remember this discussion with Jack and Steve were probably five times in the last fifteen to twenty years. I live on Ocean. Um, number two will never work. The controlled intersection of East and West and Ocean, that will, I, I just can't, like, instead I can't visualize the flow there. That's my neighborhood. I know what goes by Katie's house, what comes this way, that way. Um, biggest issue, I'm all for speed humps. I would say that helps. Let's do it. Gonna send it, say, I'm gonna say once to the people. You guys need to find out what Google shows on coming in who turned out because we have had more than one time. Big things get stuck on View. And do you remember that we had to have to turn around and walk through Sparky Lot? Or anyway, so that's just a law. I would personally, scratch number two. Um, I go for the speed hubs, bring the bikes down. The local traffic only, that'd be great if we were only local on each street, but we've got vacation rentals. And we have things that, you know, I don't know how that affects anybody. That was the first thing in my head, how many vacation rentals I have on Ocean. People planning to go in, not knowing where they are, doing so, whatever. Um, the slower traffic down Queen Street, the corner at Mary's, I'm gonna say Mary's Corner. Everybody knows where Mary's Corner is, so the guy is, is a fly, is absolutely, I just took a picture tonight. Finally got Josh and Eli and I guess Kyle on board with getting those red stripes painted on the corner. There's a car parked there today. Mary and I were walking at six that just parked right. There's no, there's no enforcement. Nobody would come around that corner. So if you're thinking that you're gonna have, let's say whatever going that way. Let's say a motorhome comes down in front of the town hall and those who can't go down Ocean View or pass a figure um, down towards Steve's, then we're gonna get it all if they wanna go down around the rain garden. But when the eateries pack the parking on both, on the parking lot and in front of the big parking and then down where the gated parking is where the star waters are on the west side, people, I mean, I'm a miss point from that. Those cars start parked like this. I know it's not busiest time all year, but right now and probably for five months out of the year, six months out of the year, you can, I feel sorry for the, the bus drivers that have to maneuver that corner. And lots of times he will look and I, there, um, Kathleen has called, so we know what happens. He will look to the right. He can't get around that rain garden. He goes straight on down, hangs a left, comes right back ocean. He has any other choice. No other choice to get out of town. I have seen motorhomes literally stuck at the trailer park down here. They have the trailer. I have seen motorhomes literally stuck at the trailer park down here, they have the trees there. Bets and all their air conditioning stuff, the big motorhomes got stuck in the trees, had to back back all the way down ocean. There isn't anything I haven't seen on, I used to live on view, so view and ocean. And Eric and Katie, I hope that those of you that are new in town or newer than I am. We have dealt with this for years and years and years and I've been at these meetings, we've asked and everything's never happened. So this can be happening, this is a blessing for our street. Um, there's still gonna be the local locals, me included, that just go and do our thing and. You know, Danny had a really hard time with the stop signs in, one of us said, I'm grandpa would do. Brad, we should, I'm not gonna shift down, come up the hill with a crab, chuckle your crab here just to make a stop there, I gotta just keep going. So that's his.
Let me, so so you would be, so one and two not keen on, three, you would.
Two, I would.
Not as speed humps.
I'm I'm not the seat.
Okay.
And I like the idea. Stick out, movable if you actually, let's say, someone says, well, see, another spot, maybe that'll help somewhere else.
Yeah, the movable feedback.
The investment engine.
Okay.
This is not the big RP next time, see, annoying as all, you know, this town isn't that big that you're gonna be going fifty miles, shouldn't be going fifty miles an hour. But, um, the the biggest issue for me as I walk and see all the traffic in the parking is Mary's corner. Something that is just not sustainable the way it is with, um, people trying to turn it, they don't wanna. Happens is people come up the hill and they don't wanna go through the narrow, where the elementary school narrows right there. Let's say it's the milk truck or the bread truck or whatever. Then they make that turn right there, and they can hardly get through there because the parking there is out into the street. It goes from street with suburbans on both sides squeezed in, and you can't make that turn. I have pictures I can show you guys.
Yeah, so I think what we'll do is we need to take a look at that again at another meeting. One, one issue you brought up was enforcement, which not necessarily part of this discussion, but we have talked about. Uh, the ability of our private security to give uh tickets. So Eli's been working on that with them and be able to do some, yeah, deserve some enforcement or deserves enforcement, absolutely. Whether that'll help long term, I'm sure.
I'd like to see this discussion brought up again, because like I said, ten years ago, it needs to be, we both discussed this. And everybody's neighborhood gets a little more impacted. So if we say, oh, the time really about the time on ocean, the order impacts Steve and Underwood and then Jack, basically, and that's where we don't have.
Hopefully we'll be able to slow it down and not redirect it. That's a good point. Yeah, we don't wanna just move the problem to another place.
As long as we, except for platform salary, but. All showing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Sounds like we have them stirred up and raptors didn't get inside. Anyway, so, uh, other public comments, and I wanna bring it back to the council. I couldn't see.
Anyone in the Zoom world have their hand up?
See anybody, but. Oh, sure. Okay, Ms. Provo. And then.
Good evening.
We have someone in the room who has one.
Yeah, good evening. Um, you know, as we grow into a coastal tourism town. And we grow our coastal tourism businesses, this is going to continue to be something that we're going to have to address. Um, I too am not in favor of many signs. I think that they are gonna be overlooked. The local traffic only would be confusing to people who come to Trinidad to visit, to go down to Bicker Beach or any of the trails. Um, I I think that'll be confusing to them. I am also in favor of of the, um, humps or bumps. Um, I think that that's a a physical, the tour that can, um, help people slow down. And I do like the suggestion by Aaron about having the, um. Um, speed limit on the road itself, um, with some arrows and things like that that point to the hump. Um, the school is a difficult situation. You know, I drop my, um, granddaughters off there in front of the school or sometimes go into the parking lot. Either way, there's a lot of traffic there. And I don't know if it would be helpful or not to have more school buses. Um, we might think about that. We don't have a school bus service for the tr- school, um, students that go there. We have to, we have to rely on parents taking them. There is a school bus service after school. So they get to ride the bus after school and I don't have to go and pick them up in the aftercare program. So I don't know what options we have there, if that would be helpful or not, or how many students and traffic that would affect. If there was a school bus that offered morning services. When I drop my, um, grandchildren off, um, then, um, I have options. I'll go straight down Trinity and then I usually turn, um, on east, I think it is, and then up to west and then down view because I have property on view. Um, I was a little confused on the map. Uh, with the red arrows, um, can we pull that back up again? Um, I don't see it on my place. There it is. There it goes. So the red arrows look like it go one way down view. And then I'm not sure what, and if so, if I take east.
Yeah, just just to jump in, those, that that was not the intent. That was just, those are the routes people are using as opposed to Maine and Trinity.
Great, uh, I appreciate that. I kinda got that after the conversation here, but that that we just wanted to confirm that. Yeah, so those are my question, my con- um, thoughts is I don't know if the signs would be, um. For, you know, adhered to, um, I am more in favor of of using, uh, the humps as a, um, a physical. Uh, um, barrier that can help slow down the traffic. Again, if this is about slowing down the traffic versus the flow of traffic, I think that's what we should, um, should consider. And, um, then let's think about what we can help the school with as far as school traffic. Um, you know, Trinidad is a wonderful school. We have excellent teachers, excellent, um, services there. And a lot of, lot of people come to Trinidad school out of the area. But if we could, um, you know, maybe control those out of the area traffic, we can't do that. But maybe we can control the in area school, um, students if we can get a bus system. So I think a study or or information from the school might be helpful with that a little bit. And thank you for allowing comments, and I know this is gonna be a a problem. We can figure out how to resolve.
Thank you. Thanks for, thank you for your comments.
So I'll be quick. So I'm Karen Reese, three ninety six Ocean Avenue. I support, I think, everybody's thematic answer is speed bumps. So the only thing I want to say is that it's a cultural change. We talk a lot about out of, you know, folks coming in to experience Trinidad. But what I see looking out my window is a lot of the same cars. From the school, from our fishermen, from many, many local people. I can tell you, I see the same cars. Yes, I see interspersed RVs, other things, but in some of them is the same. It's a cultural change. That's what the speed bumps will do. You know, we all agree that there, that we just don't see them. So it's really changing the culture of traffic. And how we drive and how fast we drive, even for all the school moms and dads who drive, who drop their kids off. I see the same cars going side, front window. So I really feel that it's really affect the cultural aspect. And it would be powerful, and I think they would conform. Kind of like the sign that you can't miss, you're driving over a speed bump. It just resonates. I do say that I will always support helping pay for it.
So, alright, thank you. Any other, I don't see anyone else online, uh, with their handwriting, so, um, I will close public comments, bring it back to the council. I I think what we heard from public comment was, um. Were you gonna say something, Jack? I don't wanna, I don't wanna wrap up. Do you have a question?
I just wanted to mention that, um, if you did wanna look at the speed bumps in Blue Lake County Railroad Avenue. So people would, it would explode.
Their comments or questions?
I've got some.
Yes.
So, um, one, I wanna thank Josh for giving us a a list of options to consider. Um, it's always nice to have things to choose from. Uh, I I definitely hear and agree with the comments about signs are are really easy to drive past, but speed bumps are not. So, um, I suggest a sort of a a series of things. One, the speed humps, obviously I think we need to survey all the residents. Thank you for coming to a council meeting, uh, that you guys who live on Ocean and View, uh, for sure. Uh, but getting all residents input, right, so that we're doing something that they know what we're doing. Um, speed humps, and I also really encourage us to to pursue the ordinance change that says a weight limit on those streets, right? A commercial driver is more likely to follow a rule because they're a commercial driver. They if they don't follow the rules, they're not a commercial driver for very long. And so putting, uh, weight limits on Ocean and View would would help that, help that, you know? I'd recommend that we send out to the school, hey, when you drop your kids off, follow the bus and turn around and use use Trinity and Maine and Edwards as your your thoroughfare through town. If you need to go see someone on Ocean View east west, that's great. But for general traffic, right? Those are the big streets that are designed for people coming and going. The other streets are designed for people living on it. So, um, I have no problem encouraging people to come in front of my house for thirty-five minutes every morning or whatever it is for drop off, right? That's what the streets are designed for, um, and making the same kind of route that the bus takes. And if we need to address the parking on on those, on that route, make sure that the buses and all of these, uh, folks dropping their kids off, leaving town. Then that's another thing that we could work on. So, um, those are my recommendations.
I just wanna also, I think that I didn't replace it, it would be fifteen mile an hours sign, um, in all these locations. Because I think even, I know local people are gonna know that, but I think in the, not just the remote, but also people coming to get it, yeah. Yeah, a clear fifteen mile an hour speed on the sign, you would, or like Steve suggested, with the bumps or the hump. But I think those all the areas of people know the limit, you know, yes, a slow speed limit, I think people. And turn to twenty-five mile an hour, but if they see the sign, they may, at least they can.
Yeah, for sure. Katie, do you have any, um, like, resident at those streets?
Yeah, and just echoing, and and Karen mentioned a culture change. I was thinking about, it's really enforced mindfulness. So if you hit a speed bump going, uh, more than fifteen miles an hour, you will become mindful. So, uh, but I also think, uh, we do need the fifteen mile an hour sign up towards, uh, east west on Ocean and probably view. And replace the one that's down towards Maine on Ocean. It's so dilapidated, Marvin Reed. In fact, we didn't even know it was there until we went looking.
Do you guys have a thought that, uh, wanting to add the fifteen mile an hour speed limits of those, one suggestion about painting it on the road versus signs? Do you guys have a opinion about that or?
I'd be happy with either.
I like painting it on the road just as, you know, it's, it's pretty easy to miss a sign. And there's a lot of them around and, you know, I, someone mentioned a sign in front of my house, like I didn't know that was there, right? You just, it becomes background noise for those of us who see it every day, right? And so, um, you can't, yeah, you cannot miss a chunk of rubber that is, uh, that is sending you into the air if you're not paying attention.
Alright, so I think what's set for the staff, I think just to 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 wrap it up. I think what we heard kind of resounding from the council and the public was, we definitely wanna pursue the speed humps. There was a discussion about maybe bringing the price down if we can. Um, we talked about, uh, speed limits, definitely at least the four fifteen mile an hour signs or painting on the road. And then, you know, some outreach to the school and and maybe one of us who, if anybody has any contacts that they'd like to leverage, Jack. Alright, alright, great. Council member West has volunteered to maybe chat with someone at the, on the school board and. Yeah, he knows somebody that, um, maybe we can talk about the traffic flow and see if there is an option. I mean, shoot, we could test the waters with cert at some point, use some of our cert volunteers to direct traffic, especially if it's, you know, a very heavy day and just see what happens. To kind of get people trained culturally to to go the right way, so that might as well.
And I do wanna support, uh, Aaron's statement that for seventeen hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-five cents, we can get. A twenty foot, uh, speed hump that you just drill into the ground, so. What's that? No, I just, I used the Google, I mean, for God's sakes.
It's a question of, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty easy to find them and 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 again, I don't know the engineering side of things. I don't know if these are, you know, if they're gonna, they're gonna be what we need. But it is possible in this pilot program to say, let's try something inexpensive and see if it works. And if it, if we, if we need a permanent thing, whatever. But again, it's pretty, I think it's money well spent either way.
And lastly, yeah, I don't wanna forget what, something that, uh, council member Larry mentioned also, uh, the, um, ordinance for the trucks. That that's a big deal because if we can get that, and I agree with you, I think the commercial truck will see that.
Yeah.
And they might, they they might actually pay twice, because, you know, weight limits, but it's worth a try. Alright, so we've got some, I think we can close that line. Um, I feel that there's just a teensy bit of weariness in the council and perhaps we would like a five minute break before we tackle the budget. Am I, am I reading the audience correctly here? Yes, so we will take a five minute break. We will resume then at, uh, let's do eight, eight sharp.
Eight o'clock. Why does this street, is it twenty feet?
One, maybe, one, I see, I can barely, the years been west, they're like sixty one. Barely get around five, the ones that are.
Which, which you said on railroad, that's the one that parallels the.
Yeah, yeah, outside neckles, I'm seeing.
Yep, yep, yep. No, I've been on those, I've been on those.
There's a brewery out there, that's why you see.
Well, but the, but the speed bumps.
Too, they're bump humps.
Well, but we're talking about. Yeah, I would rather.
Uh, decent, they can look at there, uh, there, but the ones would also be noise here.
And we don't want the bumps to be this.
Resident, too, they'll be, I don't know, I don't know how bad, that's why I say we didn't look at them, I, I. But they were kind of miserable, but, uh, they were slowing people down for sure. So that's why I say, look, that's why I have some of them that they might.
Well, yeah.
Look at.
Yeah.
I think we should look at, they're equivalent, they're still the same, thank you. You look at the bumps, right?
Those were humps.
Those are temporary.
No, I mean, temporary, that we, we drill them into the ground, not temporary, they're, they're movable. If you change your mind, the public person, yeah, I, I just. So I'm in Southern Chile and I'm on a kayak here. Driving back, the guy gets super tired, I'm like, sure. Right, I'm driving it and I'm at full speed, it's the radio, all of the boats are here. I didn't know that, I had a speed bump at full speed. And we were in the air and he's like, yeah, that one gets me every time. So this discussion. It's been running with speed.
Oh, take the, say, the city, you read that. Why don't we take some fun? You are so many positive ideas that I love that. Did that street top on my head? Big, big deep holes. Ten bucks, I wouldn't. Next to the street. What was it? It was probably. But we just approved it. Repaving all of our speaking sound, I think we have to refuse. Where was I? Oh, God, both have the whole time. Really, it's awesome. Yeah, really. Really. Most of the. So Steve. Birthday, when you go.
If that road is such a mess, I don't know, I was like that back then.
Well, oh, is it birthday?
Yeah, I mean, when you're going, like, when you exit a university instead of having.
Yeah, no, these streets are poor.
They, they, they're not here, it's like.
Same with, same with, like, whatever it's that square down. Not Jacksonville. Whatever, maybe, yeah. So near there, there's this big agricultural distribution place and a bunch of little coffee bottles. And I swear, you get into this.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
All right, it's eight o'clock, top of the hour, and we are at the money part of this, the teaching agenda. So we're gonna talk about our budget, since I believe that third discussion we've had on our FY twenty twenty-four budget. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Gabe to lead us through. I think you're just gonna cover kind of some of the things we brought up last time, and we should be in pretty good shape.
Yeah, we did a lot of the heavy lifting. The last meeting, it took an hour and twenty minutes talking about it. We went into detail, talked about the structure of the budget, the background information, some pros and cons, the things we, you know, were successes, things we may have missed. And at that time, we had the financial statements through March, but I had just received the April statements. So between the last meeting and today, we were able to put the final budget together, which is what I hope to keep. Tonight. Um, I added this summary, which I'll just use as my guide for the, for the beginning of the topic. I, I threw it in there this afternoon, then promised I would at least explain it so you didn't feel like you had to read it. But I'll summarize it just to make sure that we take one quick step back and we move ahead and I'll, you know, illustrate how the budget has come together based on everything we discussed so far, including the, the good conversation and requests made at the last meeting, which really helped bring it all together. So this current draft, I like to look at these budgets as not only just, you know, our financial roadmap, but also our work. They kind of work as, as guides for us to be able to measure not only staff success, but of course, you know, council will, speaking through the residents as to what needs to be done. Uh, but this budget aims to, to provide a continued focus on the transitional stability for our water fund, to maintain and enhance current levels of service provided by the city. It's a commitment to keeping our public buildings maintained, and also an alignment of staff responsibilities and wages to encourage, as Mayor Kelly said, I, I listened to the meeting and I like what she said, upward mobility and retention. Thought that was a really good comment. And I added that to this summary stat. Staff emphasizes that this is a working draft, that will need adjustments as the year progresses, and accurately reflects, reflects the desires of the community based on priorities set by the council. It includes the general fund, restricted funds, and special revenue funds, all in the form of worksheets that we put into a small booklet, which you have included in this packet. As far as the general fund goes, it's still, it's a little bit unclear how economic trends will affect the trend as top two revenues, revenue sources, and sales not because of taxes. At least at this time, it would be pretty resilient. We're getting signals from the county that sales taxes are also resilient this year, which is very interesting to me, how Trinidad seems to be going in the opposite direction. Uh, but I do have a pretty decent understanding of how sales taxes work and factor in Barberville and McKinleyville and the cash economy that may have maybe drying up. I think that kind of has a lot to do with it. The trade ads, two sources seem to be pretty resilient. Our conservative approach to spending coupled with steady revenue sources from our baseline economy and significant contributions from visitors has helped us build our reserves, which is very important thing to understand about the city's financial structure. Our sales and occupancy taxes are volatile revenue sources. They're strongly, the economy is healthy, but disrupted by natural disasters easily, like wildfires, droughts, pandemics, or human triggered disasters such as out of market. It's common for cities that are primarily funded by fragile revenue streams to maintain health and deterrence. Uh, and since two thousand and five, city leaders have been prioritized. Our reserves are providing short-term insurance to shield the city from sudden changes, specifically for use as matching funds, and also to leverage larger grant, which in this case, I mean, this upcoming year is really going to be necessary. It's gonna also provide cash flow support during those large-scale grant construction phases and stabilize the budget in an emergency. We're not in an emergency from a general fund perspective at all this coming year. This FY. Uh, but a couple of things that we noticed that were new since May twenty thirty was some increase in the county sheriff contract. That, I think the city manager and I were anticipating maybe a ten or fifteen percent increase, which it's turned out to be quite a bit. We were paying a hundred forty-seven thousand dollars, but because of the county situation, the T, sales tax issues, staffing issues, and for increased salaries to pay and to retain these sheriff's deputies, the sheriff had basically reanalyzed how they developed their cost analysis and their structure for who's and how these contract cities are paying for their services, and they included overhead, some of the deeper expenses, some of the, you know, things you don't see. We talked about the sheriff's coverage in terms of deputies on the ground, but that sheriff's office provides everything beyond that deputy from district attorney, you know, court fees, bookings, the vehicles, the, the weapons, the trainings, all of that. Apparently, the county sheriff has, when they're feeling in time direction, we're gonna feel it. We're gonna, we're just gonna roll down him. So it's gone from a hundred forty-seven thousand dollars to, I think, two hundred twenty-five.
Right, yeah. Yeah, so it also includes overtime and also the sheriff's office had to cut back their budget by ten percent. So as a result, they're trying to figure out how they can survive. Uh, but, and they've increased hours.
So that was a pretty important thing to have to factor in and surprise, but it, it works. And the budget we're proposing, I'll explain in a quick second. What's that cost? Uh, we can, here. For a second. The cost to operate the treatment plant will continue to rise. And to separate how the font, how the water system operates, it's easiest to look at it in two patterns. It's hard costs and soft. Our costs include general operating expenses such as energy, energy costs around the plant, in-house licensed personnel, treatment tech, workers harder, vehicle machine and treatment costs. I noticed a fifteen percent increase already in this past year in just the overhead utilities, energy. From the plant, fifteen percent across every. Energy, and then of course, that, that translates to the chemicals, testing fees, all associated costs that risen a minimum fifteen, fifteen percent. Soft costs are the technical and engineering staff time required to evaluate system itself, patron planning, drought consulting, and resilience. Most specifically, loss of our experience. At the end of June twenty twenty-two, the system overspent two hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. At year end twenty twenty-three, we're expecting close to three hundred thousand. And then here in twenty twenty-four, we're projected to overspend, projected to overspend two hundred eighty thousand, uh, leaving the fund balance at a red line level, which would be approximately three hundred thousand, which one point, where it started about three years ago. So this budget includes a priority for management to begin the rate analysis. And I've been having some good back and forth conversations with the Redwood action agents or. Rural Community RCA.
Yeah, it's Rural Community Action RCA.
Yeah. And they're offering to do the rate analysis for the city for charge. We're gonna have to spend quite a bit of our own energy to feed to them, so there will be a charge. USDA is apparently funding. They're working. They have room for one more system to do an, to do an analysis for one more community system. We're a bit more sophisticated than they normally see. They're usually helping much smaller, much less sophisticated systems, even though Trinidad's small, we apparently, according to my conversations with them, they're very impressed with how small a system we have and the amount of knowledge that we have. Uh, most systems couldn't afford to even begin to discuss that they work with anyway. A dime, putting a dime towards a, a rate analysis where the city of Trinidad could afford potentially. We've discussed with our city engineering staff uh, feasibility or the benefits versus cost, uh, opportunity to have our engineers do it versus this, the, yeah, RCA, RCA. And even the engineer said, you know, we're not quite ready this year. If we have more data the next three to five years, which is our maximum amount of increased stream without having to trigger the two eighteen uh, laws, then should take it on. So they're ready to start.
So Gabe, I have a question about the, so the rates that, so let me just, sorry, it's a water question. So our total revenues projected for twenty twenty, FY twenty twenty-four, three hundred and seventy-eight K. Our total expenses projected are roughly six hundred and seventy K. Of the six hundred and seventy K expense, two hundred and sixty-one K, uh, roughly is contracted services. So if I pull that out, if I pull out the two sixty-one, our expenses of six sixty-nine and change or six seventy, it goes down to four hundred and eight thousand. So that means our normal rent rate expense should be around four hundred and eight thousand, and we're collecting three hundred and seventy-eight. So we're, so we do need a rate study. We do need to make up that, um, do the math really quick, thirty thousand dollars, right? So there's thirty thousand dollar shortfall roughly that a rate study is gonna correct, but it's not gonna correct for the extra contracted services. Right? So we still need to address that. We can't keep going year after year with, right? So I'm not sure what we do. We've talked about this a bunch of times. I know, you know, everybody's working on it and we're trying to fix it, but I just want to point out that the rate study is not gonna recoup that money. It's right, it's not gonna, yeah. So I just want to make sure everybody understands.
That's a very good point. Three hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars that I projected in budget actually took the liberty of factoring in six months. Assuming we have a rate study by the end of this year, gun and prop two eighteen process complete, I factored in a simple fifteen. Yes, just to, so I can see how the budget will plan with a fifteen percent increase implemented across the board with the rates starting January first. I feel like it's gonna be much more. And we can only raise rates or plug in a continual annual rate increase, whether it's a CPI or fixed amount for a five-year basis. And what's triggered, about two eighteen triggered, we have to go back to what they call protests. Out of both, we put the ballot and all the voters in the water system get to say whether or not they appreciate, they, they, they will accept it or not. If we don't get a majority of protests in the public hearing process of all of our rate pairs, which is three hundred twenty-five, then the rate is in whatever the structure we determine. So when you're thinking about rebuilding our reserves, we can only really look ahead five years. And we're gonna have to determine in that rate analysis process how much we think is adequate. We might not have to rebuild the rate, the, the reserves to one point two million in five years. We may decide to just take a small bite at a time. But prior to this, we we were losing money already because we hadn't raised the rates last since twenty seventeen. So the numbers you're seeing in the budget is really just a tool for me to factor in. And I just factored in a fifteen percent, so that's the revenue, three seventy-eight. Right now, we're barely currently at three hundred thirty. So that's a forty thousand dollar difference. But I'm just showing how we predict if we were able to factor in a minimum fifteen percent. Now, those numbers are gonna change. This is gonna be a budget for the water fund. It's gonna be, we're gonna watch really closely. And the number that we included for contracted services is assuming our staffing plan with a T two, T three will help us slowly minimize the cost throughout the year. And so if we factored in thirty thousand for Coleman on a monthly basis, times twelve months, that's a much larger number than what I'm showing in budget. So we missed our big time this last year. We budgeted at thirty-six thousand, but we're at three hundred seventeen thousand. So I'm being a little more conservative with that. Say Coleman's not going away anytime too soon, but we're gonna try to lean them off based on our current staffing plan that we're hoping to, to leave.
When we do the rate study, though, we're looking at recouping the four hundred and eight thousand. Correct. Yeah, not, not trying to recoup the, or, or refill the reserve.
Right.
Okay, I just want to make that clear because there are, a lot of people have questions about that.
Refilling the reserve and, and it should be factored in, but we don't have to do it like all at once. Uh, but that's something that will suss out in the rating system, the, the engineers and people that will be helping us discuss this, you know, I mean, the, the money's not gonna just magically appear back in budget. It's coming, it's gotta come from the rate pair.
So, so, so that's the transparency that I think we've been.
And I think we could, I mean, I, I would suggest we reframe this, that we're not recouping and we're not rebuilding. Because that just says, oh, we gotta pay this money back. We don't, we don't have to. We're, we're coming up with a rate that has in it the ability to have a reserve fund because of unexpected catastrophes at the plant or this, this staffing issue, right? I just think it's dangerous for us to say we need to, like, we need to recoup that four hundred and eight thousand dollars, because then there's this, this sense of urgency. Four hundred and eight thousand dollars at once. And I think that's a harder pill to swallow to say, when I pay my monthly water bill, I am reserve that the city can use. And maybe we're splitting hairs in its semantics, but I just feel like we're, we're setting ourselves up for, for not being able to manage expectations that we have to recoup something. The goal is to never ever have to be without. The goal is to never ever have to be without adequate staffing for the water. But need to be aware that it's a possibility.
It's a, it's a cost recovery model. So, so it's, the water system that we have as a city is based on expense and revenue. And it needs to balance, right? And so, so, so I don't know if recoup maybe not be the right word, but cost recovery, I think is, is accurate. Because it's, and we can't recover more than we spend because that's not legal in the state of California.
Right, right.
But, but what I'm, I'm gonna, the elephant in the room is that there was an additional amount spent for the contracted services that members of the community believed they were not going to be charged for if we raised water rates. And so what I was trying to get to is, is that true? That we are not going to raise their rates, uh, and they're going, and therefore they would be covering this? Or, or are we gonna raise the rates to cover everything? I mean, it's kind of a simple question.
But we were losing money before Coleman engineered.
Right. And we need, exactly.
Right.
We need, yeah. So we need to be, it's, it's a zero sum game. It's cost recovery, right? So I think, so are we saying that when we raise the rates, we're gonna cover the six, the six hundred and sixty nine thousand? Or are we covering the four hundred and eight? That's all I'm trying to figure out.
So the, the rates, uh, would have all of our expenses plus a certain amount for reserves, which we always factor in. But they will be based upon the model of what we're gonna have for our upcoming, you know, years. Meaning, uh, how many people are working in, in what our actual costs would be.
Okay. So it's a, it's based on a projected expense. It's a cost recovery model based on projected expense and that projected expense has gone up because of the contractor, the contract model that we have to use right now. And so that will be factored into water rates. Am I, am I correct or no?
Well, so, so anyway, RCA C will look at.
Okay.
Uh, but you know, number one, yeah, yeah, number one. Uh, when I say, but whatever the expenses would be, when you factor in our city employees and you factor in a certain amount of reserve that we would need. And then, uh, I, I've been strongly saying that, you know, as we work away from Coleman engineering, that I would like to see them remain as a consulting firm. So that any of our staff at any point can contact them, ask them questions and whatever.
You keep them on retainer.
Yeah, yeah, for, for, for a small amount. Uh, the, what they've done with the system is something that I think we shouldn't lose. We should just continue with it growth because it's working very well. And, and, and I want to make sure that our employees keep up with that and, and the training that may be necessary. So that we don't lose ground for all the money we've spent.
I don't, I don't understand.
Gabe, um, on the water plant, are we on a time of use electrical rate there or do we have a flat rate every hour of the day?
Good point. I think we're on, uh, our short, basically for sure. I have to check and see if it's time of usage. I think it is.
I think they're, they're, right, they're, they're forcing everyone to time the use because they would, they don't want to use so much electricity when, you know, between four and nine, when, when there's so much demand. And I was wondering maybe if we could use, uh, more power during the off peak times, less during that four to nine period where they're maybe charging a C.
We, we do, we do. Yeah. Uh, before the plant was running during the day. And now Coleman Engineering has it with plants running. Right. So during the day, we're drawing down from the, uh, water.
Alright, so we'll look forward to the analysis. We'll dig in when we get it. Please continue.
Yeah, I'll give you one last thing to that. And I know exactly where, you know, what, what we're trying to package out here. We, this city's operated a water system for many years. We have a model that we know works.
Yeah.
Now we just plug in how many operators we believe we need. We have, we have a format that we can. Let's tell you, we, we take in a, in sort of like a, a wish list of what we would want. And we can project what those costs are. So yeah, that would be the idea. We won't be projecting like in, you know, a forever plan with a very expensive contract. No, those, that rate will be hopefully structured with our template. And then the reserves built in, whether it's five years or ten, you might not get back to the reserve levels for, for a long time. We, we don't. That might not be something that, that. But, um, repair group will like very much.
So, so the other thing that really is important for especially the city residents to realize and think about is that running the city, the burden of that is on the community, the city of Trinidad. Running the water plant, the rate payers are fifty percent. I mean, well, okay, so, uh, so basically one third, so two thirds are from the city and one third is from the castle. So it's really important, also the, uh, water plant and the cemetery are considered enterprise funds, which means that they're separate from the general fund and they need to survive under all. So it's important that the water plant, because one third of the users are from the county, is, is that it's sustained by itself without creating burden on the city and the city residents.
Yes.
So the next, uh, section is summary, which we're coming back to probably in change. Uh, which is the goals and priorities, utilizing reserves established from prior fiscal years. Need to support staff transitions, evaluating updated charges for service to reflect the times. Maybe optimization is inevitable. Uh, maintaining current law enforcement coverage and improve vital government services, educating and enforcing new laws passed. discourage overnight parking and camping. That's something left over from last year, but I kept it. I feel like it hasn't gone away. Uh, reclaiming the water plant operations from licensing and sols. That's in public buildings, parks and property. That's trails. That's this building, things we discussed. We wanted to actually see, we can make those things happen now versus a time where they might get more expensive due when it's. Uh, supporting beauty, beauty groups that enrich this town for locals and visitors. And that's kind of what's happening. I mean, we've seen a, what haven't we seen like a town hall revival? We're out of that. It looks like it's open. So, uh, we're gonna keep, can probably strike those two words, but it is pretty true. Uh, and, uh, promoting inclusive dialogue with tribal governments. Uh, and continued grant programs about satisfying several elements of the general plan date, um. Advance to this summary here and we'll cut right to the chase.
Last, I'm just in a part of a windmill, sorry. Uh, because you went through this, I, I just want to, uh, let the, uh, council know and staff. Uh, very, uh, center of, uh, the water board is going to be coming to our water plant this Friday. And this is the first time that the water board has come to our plant, uh, since before COVID. Or at least since twenty twenty, yeah, which would be before COVID. So, so, uh, so, so that would be very good. But I just wanted you to be aware.
Coming for water.
Well, usually they come on an annual basis to see the operation, see how it's working, if it's meeting whatever they would like to see from the state perspective. So that's part of the reason why we've been relying, because they've asked us a lot of questions over the phone. You know, over the, this area where we have changed from, you know, our prior operators. And, and they're really insisting on, you know, you've got to have a T three who's the water plant operator, so on and so forth. So we try to meet all of these expectations of them. Uh, so he's basically gonna be expecting that everything is up to par at the water. Which it should be fine and, and I have a comfort level because I feel like it's being done professionally.
Great.
So our summary here is again, something else we'll be coming back to likely in, uh, January to see where we're. At that time, six months through this year. What this represents, it just kind of shows you in the revenue category, what our revenue projections are. That's our sales tax, occupancy taxes, property taxes, miscellaneous income. Some Terry plot purchases, the franchise fees we receive from humble sanitation and some transferred money in from our T P A. Special revenue funds to offset public works labor, labor and it looks like we're looking at about seven hundred and ninety six dollars in general revenue to the city this year. This doesn't include any transfers in from our grants. Cover a lot of the payroll. allocations that we, we have associated with each one of those grants, but it's just, uh, kind of the easiest way to look at a complex structure of the city's budget. Our expenses for each separate category, the general fund, administrative, public works, fire, police, cemetery and waste management, uh, total approximately ninety one thousand, seven hundred and forty five dollars. More than what we're taking in now. There's a reserve fund obviously to dedicate, dedicated to cover this. If you, if we frame this in a way that it's deficit spending, that would be rather inept, but I like to paint it how it is. Budget conservatively for our income and liberally for expect. Put it in this budget is a new overage, uh, new expensive shared contract. As far as that ninety one thousand dollars is concerned, we're currently under budgeting our revenue for sales tax to the tune of approximately. This year, it looks like we might have close to eighty thousand more in revenue than we anticipated. And that's the, still the big mystery. Why is Trinidad, it must be those Amazon purchases. One Trinidad are doing pretty good. Now, gas at Chevron, price goes up, city receives more revenue. So in theory, oh, and this budget also for fire includes a thirty five thousand dollar transitional fund lock. And that is at the council's request, as we may discover a transition necessary with our fire department that could cost the city some money. So there's some money factored into the general fund that may or may not be spent. But it's there as an assurance, something you can kind of get used to over the next few years, see. So in theory, that ninety one thousand dollars could end up being a positive, being a balanced, you know?
The security system, the people that we were talking about, there is.
They are, they are. It's a city, uh, it's hitting those securities. That's also factored in. So there's, there's revenues under projected and there's expenses sort of over projected. So ninety one thousand dollars, I would say is, is more like, uh, it's gonna be like a balanced budget at the end of the year. And especially if you think some of the things that we budgeted the years prior were not spent in the last year or two, we just rolled them into this budget. So we're gonna get more in theory, hopefully, if we can execute the council's will. Uh, using a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in excess revenue from last year. So really, we're just dipping into the reserves, spending money that we weren't able to spend last year. So I wanted to make sure you understand that ninety one thousand dollar deficit is not sustained debt. It's something that is, uh, our budget is very sustained at this time.
Yeah, it's like we've been pretty good at managing that where we, throughout the year, you know, we might start out with a projection that's a little low. You know, and it adjusts over, over time. Sorry, Eli, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So, uh, so regarding the sales tax, Dave and I have talked about it and, uh, the communities that are usually hurting the most right now, and when I say hurting most, this is that the ones that, uh, as far as sales tax, it's not increasing as quickly as it is for us, are the ones with the brick and mortar. Uh, so like, you know, with the mall, you, unfortunately you see a large part of the mall is vacant. And then also, you know, wherever there are, uh, stores that people shop at, uh, those, you know, like Bed, Bed and Beyond is gonna be closing and stuff like that. Uh, versus for us, uh, because, you know, other than the supermarket and the, uh, gas station and some gift shops and restaurants, we don't really have that much, my, my, as far as, so like Dave was saying, uh, a lot of the stuff that people now are buying online, we're benefiting from and we're not suffering from the brick, brick and mortar vacancies and so on. That other communities are suffering from. Uh, the other thing is our cemetery. At the cemetery, we've talked about it quite a bit internally at the town hall. As you could see, we have fifteen thousand revenue and twenty one thousand, uh, expense, uh, almost twenty two thousand, which is over fifty percent. Uh, so that needs to be corrected. We need to adjust those rates, number one. Number two, uh, a lot of the people who are actually coming and buying lots are actually from outside Trinidad. Uh, and then number three, we've been talking about the possibility of purchasing some additional land that's available by the cemetery. Uh, so, so all of that we should factor in. And I think, you know, we've talked about it. I think it's about time because we're getting close to selling out the cemetery. So, uh, so we, we need to start addressing. I don't know. We should set up a task force for what we should, uh, but, but it should have addressed ideally during this year.
Yeah, I noticed that and the expense has gone up over year over year for the last year or so. We need to add in the expense of a new sign.
Which is right, exactly. That you pointed that out there. Yeah, this sheet, that is our summary sheet in our budget packet, stays with the budget packet always. Rate adjustments and optimizations are listed. Including cemetery fund, we just. Finding fees, building permit fees, budget policy implementation, water rate analysis, personnel. So this is our roadmap and I guess I could go, you know, back, we, if you want to touch on anything, I think I'll turn it over to the council at this point. But I, I listed on your highlights what this budget accomplishes. Again, I mean, I, I love this time of the year when we talk about what we can do, but the boots on the ground, making things happen is where sometimes we get held up. Uh, luckily we have a reserve. We built a reserve by not giving things, especially during COVID. We didn't get to do all the projects that we set sail to do. So that reserve kind of built, um, finding motivation, finding the people and directing staff in such a way that we can follow through with the services and things that we've set sail to do at the beginning of the year is, is, uh, in terms of the rubber exit route. And I, I hope we can do it, but at least I can see from where I'm sitting that this budget accomplishes this list.
Thank you. Thanks, Gabe. That, you know, great job over the last three meetings and running through this. Um, I asked my questions along the way. Do, do any counselors have other questions or comments? Counselor Wett?
Yes, um, under public works and the general fund summary here, I've listed ten thousand dollars has still been set aside for trail maintenance projects. Spent like twenty six thousand dollars currently, which is basically the three years of our budget going back, uh, currently. But I think, um, Eli mentioned today that there's some trust money that could potentially be used to offset some of those expenses. So that money, ten thousand dollars is pre-programmed into the trail maintenance budget this year, uh, as well as priorities to invest, I think. Those, maybe even decking. Don't look decking.
Start with the deck.
Thank you.
Uh, I did, I would like to, to comment the, the, with the short term rental. I know that there was a, a nice, very detailed look at the, the permit fee and the time it takes to administer that. And the fee was raised to meet that. And I just wanna, I guess, encourage that with all of the different, like, what do you call it? The optimization.
Yeah.
Right? So we saw the effect of looking at the fee that we're charging for the, the twenty eight or whatever licenses for children. That was a very successful effort. I just encourage more of that because. And just encourage more of that because I think that the, the real devil in the details is when we're spending a lot more on staffing, which we value and not bringing in much to, to really sort of recognize the hours spent on all of these different projects. So I like that we're investing in, in our, in our personnel and in the ways that we generate some income for the work that's being done. So I guess I'm just encouraging that to be really a regular discussion topic at staff meetings. And throughout the, the, the year, we should all be kind of thinking about that, like, hey, are building fees meeting the needs, uh, of the time it takes to administer those permits and so on and so forth. So I just want to encourage that.
And, and I do want to add, since you mentioned the, the fact about the personnel. So factored in is a 4% cost of living increase for staff. And this morning on Marketplace on NPR, they said for the last three months, inflation rate has been exactly 4%, so. So it worked out well.
That's it. The, uh, 4% increase, which I'm in favor of, I just, is that written into something? How, how did that happen? Does the city?
We, we, we. Are you?
How does it come about that you?
How was it approved?
What's it received?
Yeah, well, because it's a COLA, it's a cost of living adjustment. So, so in, in the employment manual, it does allow, you know, for a cost of living adjustment. It also allows for, you know, like, and you have the scales for employees depending on their positions that it, it could be factored into. Right.
No, and I think that, you know, in terms of how it's approved too, that it, it's included in the budget. So if we approve the budget, we are approving that raise at de facto. And so that's good to know. I think we talked about it a little bit in the last meeting, we touched on it, but yeah. Um, so yeah, I think well deserved.
Looking on occupancy tax this year, do we see decreasing, going down, stabilizing?
It's a really good question. Buzz of the glitch from the 10% to the 8% now 12%. It was a challenge to, to predict because usually we can watch the curve, you know, the adjustments. I mean, we, I think that factored in last year, $1.5 million in taxable rents. That turned out to be approximately. As we had a setback, went back to 8%, we only may realize, I'm not sure exactly how we're going to count this year, maybe 125, 130. So had we had that continuity, I would be able to say, yeah, here, here's what it's looking like. And it looks like, you know, the rate, the rate optimization is happening everywhere else but Trinidad, or but internally, which is what your person loudly here just, just mentioned, like, you've got to look internally too, for staff, everything else we do. Because everything we spend money is costing more, anything we spend on is costing. So we need to do the same thing internally. It was very difficult to, to kind of get that, but, um, just like everything else, costs have gone up every, can't imagine people who have rental houses in town are saying how turn less this year. Um, they're probably charging more and when they charge more, the city makes it. So I'm judging 150,000.
Yeah, I've just been noticing the, the houses aren't as full as they used to be. Definitely during 2020, they were always full to help, you know, but.
You mean 2021?
So, no, hey. 2021, right.
And I can just tell you as a, as a business owner, we'll never see the, the boom of the, whatever, the post hibernation thing that, that we talked about. And now things have kind of mellowed out. So I, I think that 140 to 150 is a realistic kind of, at least benchmark. I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, I've just been noticing the bit of that this, isn't this is.
All right, let me, um, let's move to public comment on the budget at this point and see if there's any comments. I'll go online, I guess. I don't see anybody's hand raised.
Oh, there it is.
Oh, okay. Jerry, you're, uh?
Yeah, I'm still here and it's getting dark in my little space, but I'm still here. Um, I know it's very difficult, rising costs all the time are challenging to, to manage, uh, with limited budgets. Um, I, I just worry about the water rates. Um, I know that that was a very difficult situation when we lost the co, the licensed person and you had to, the city had to go immediately to a contractor. What I'm concerned about is that, um, I'm not sure what the due diligence was to find a contractor and really look at rates that were, um, not ex, so extraordinary, you know, astronomically, it seemed really, really a lot of money. And I think you heard that from the community prior. Um, and I do, I, I appreciate, um, Mayor Kelly's comment that hopefully this, this not get passed on to the consumer because we had to make, you know, had to do a contracted, um, situation. I hope, and it sounds like there is plans for redundancy for having term. Um, you know, with qualified staff now in the future, but I just hope that contracted situation doesn't, um, pass on to the consumer. Um, so that was my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments? I, I see none, so I'm going to bring it back to the council. How are we feeling about the FY '24 budget and moving it?
I move that we approve the budget for '24, '25. I'm sure there's a resolution. Let's see. That we adopt fiscal year '24 budget for the city of Trinidad, resolution 2023-05.
Nice, thank you, Ben.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks again, Gabe. Yeah. Um, okay, so with that, I do want to not forget that we were going to talk about, want to not forget that we were going to talk about the July meeting. So, um, we have different kind of scheduling challenges. So I think the question, Eli, is, uh, for the council is, do we want to skip the July meeting? Or do we want to hold a later in July meeting? And I guess there's also a question to staff, are there any looming deadlines for grants or anything like that would preclude us skipping, uh, July, some, you know, kind of let everybody have a good thought. Um, so I guess like, sorry, that was a little run on sentence. Staff, is there any looming deadlines that you're aware of for July?
Well, we don't have that in secret right there.
Okay, oh, okay.
So the, uh, July meeting normally would have been the 11th. Uh, but we're talking about possibly number one, not having this meeting on the 11th. But instead possibly having it on the 25th of July or not even having. I, I would say it would probably make sense if it works for everybody to plan on having a meeting on the 25th. And then if things don't feel like you really need it, we can always cancel it. But, uh, I just hate to have a long stretch, uh, you know, of two months between meetings.
Yeah, would, okay. Looks like I see heads nodding. All right, so, uh, we will have our meeting on July 25th. And then, I'm sorry, I don't know yet.
And, and this kind of generated that both Cheryl and I were planning on being out. And while certainly three is a quorum, we're kind of, you know, limited. So that's, thank you for adjusting for the 25th. I'll be back on the 25th. And if you're still out.
And we'll, yeah, we'll coordinate. We'll have a quorum.
Um, so thank you, everybody, for adjusting for, for July.
All right, uh, future agenda.
Well, you know, I, I know what September will be an issue for at least, uh, uh, council member. Uh, is that correct?
I'll say that again.
I, I said September would still be an issue for you.
Uh, September, that's right. It will be on kind of business trading.
Yeah. And then, so is August, uh, okay for everybody?
Think so.
I don't have anything.
Yep.
Okay, that I know of.
Um, Jack West, are you okay for August? Not going fishing or anything?
I can.
All right, uh. Okay, so that was kind of our future agenda topic, I think, unless, does anyone have any, anything you want to add to future agenda items? Twice, all right, then.
Hey, uh, I, sorry, can you hear me? Okay, I did have my hand raised for future agenda item, if that's appropriate.
Okay, yeah, we couldn't see you.
Sorry.
There you are.
Oh, Aaron, hi.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Um. Oh, yeah, it, it hides in the sunset there. Um, I did want to suggest to bring up again, um, looking into both, from my perspective as the planning commission chair, as well as now participating in the meeting online. Um, making our Zoom hybrid, uh, infrastructure better. Um, I can tell you there's very mixed results right now, sitting here tonight, listening to you folks, since I transitioned from in the room. And anyway, I just, I just think it's time to commit to that. And I know you guys just did the budget and I know we're, you know, struggling with funding, but maybe we can look at some grant sources or something like that, but I, I'd like to see that continue as a future agenda item because it's an issue for all our public meetings. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment on future agenda items?
Well, we have the website unveiling for July.
Yeah, we can do that in July.
I can't think of any others.
Yeah, just a moment, I got that. Sure, there's something. We had a long list last week.
Um, as far as the Trinidad's head steps, uh, I had got an initial estimate from, uh, RCAA. And then they, uh, told me that they need to go over the numbers again because, uh, there's two people who are involved, the one person in the office and the one person who's like the executive. And, uh, and, and they were out of town. So, uh, I'm waiting still to get that. Um, the, the last question they asked, uh, and I mentioned it, uh, Cheryl, we, we, they asked if we wanted to have, um, steps, be redwood or, uh, treated wood and pressure treated. So I just told them to do the redwood because I know the state is not keen on pressure treated wood. And, uh, and, and it's hard to get rid of, so we don't want to create a problem. It'll take, it'll take a long time. To get rid of it, but, but also who knows what it may do to soil too. Which, yeah, so anyway, they were going to go with redwood, so they're going to give me an S. Trinidad head steps.
Another future agenda item would be, uh, presentation from PWA on updates on what we're doing with our contract service with that.
Yeah, I think that would, I think you mentioned that last time. That's a good one. And, yeah, these are the future. Thank you, Gabe. So we talked, we've done traffic building. Animal control, we could bring that back. Oh, yeah. Um, maybe the ambassador program, I'm certain we talked about, you know, making a final decision on. So, well, you know, we'll have a few maybe shorter, maybe more of a shorter topics to go through. Okay.
So, uh, since we mentioned animal control ordinance, uh, do factored in the 6,000? Yeah. That, are they aware of that?
Um, I don't think I brought that up, but there, there was also an email that came through, by the way, it's included in the budget from animal control services saying that if the city wants us to be their 40 contractor across 6,000.
Yeah.
January.
Total.
And they need a full service.
So I factored in signing contractors. For now, it's going to be a public display of that, but the number has been included in that.
Oh, good, okay. Well, that would be a good one to talk about then, maybe the ordinance component of that.
Yeah.
I think you were going to have the lawyer see putting teeth in the ordinance.
Well, yeah, the ordinance said so, uh, but, uh, like I said, uh, at the same time, the county's working on it. Uh, with, um, and the sheriff. And now that we're going to be doing this service through the county, uh, you know, we may have a similar contract as the county, but we'll, we'll, we'll see at what they come up with and, and then we can compare it.
And I would like us to, to really have a concerted presentation from LAFCO on the three areas of annexation that have been recommended multiple times around the city so that one, I'm trying to generate, like tonight, we had people who came to the meeting. I like that. And that would be a great way to get people to come to the meeting. And two, you know, we keep dancing around this topic, but we don't do it. So, um, I, I think I'd like to start that kind of information campaign to, so that we could make an informed decision so that we're not just talking about it, we're actually talking about what it would mean to do. Or like, let's not do it. Let's just take it two years off and talk. So I'd really love to see LAFCO come and talk about the process, um, give us considerations. And even, you know, what would it cost to annex this group versus that group in terms of like, what would it cost, but also what would it bring in? We're talking about revenue. You know, that's more people buying stuff online, it's in city limits, right? So, you know, that's something.
The cost benefit.
Yeah.
Analysis. And Trevor can, um, maybe versus.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, Trevor's.
She's got a lot of background from the other times that we've discussed.
Yeah, I think it's time for us to have an annexation kind of workshop, or not workshop, but just presentation.
Yeah.
Wherever it fits, right? Because if we're going to, a bunch of us are gone in July and in September, let's not do that. Let's do. Great.
That sounds good. All right, that's a wrap. Thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned.